We're going to call to order this retreat. The United States is a retreat. We're going to be very informal today. Do you like to lead the snack along? Do that, too. We want everybody to be comfortable and enthused in their right minds. Um, we're going to ask Councilman Brantley for the application, and Councilman Atkins for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, in the name of Jesus, we come at this hour of the morning to say thank you. We thank you, God, for allowing us to come into another Jasper County Council retreat. I mean, pray, oh God, as we enter into this retreat, that you would imbue our heads with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding so that we might make the decisions that would impact the masses of people of the county that we represent, oh God. And, oh God, we pray that you would lead us from one good degree onto another, and then make us better men and women, boys and girls tomorrow than they ought to be. This is our prayer we pray, no God's people say.
Amen.
First, on the journey this morning, we're going to review the budget. And Kim will give us a brief synopsis, synopsis of the budget. We are not going line by line because you've had your budget, and if there's a concern about something in the budget, you should have checked it off and bring it to this council. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Paul.
Madam Chair, just...
Oh, I didn't do the compliance.
Just madam, thank you.
In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice the meetings and agendas were posted and furnished all news media and persons requesting notification.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, you talked about we have received the budget and that we should have gone through it, okay? Are we talking about the itemized budget for each entity that has come before us?
All of it, the whole budget. The ones that came before us, the ones that's coming. You should have had all that in the package. But you got it now. That's the whole thing ahead, the issue to us again. That's the breakage zone is there. And like I said, once you get catch, read up on it next week. You'll be, um, ready, or even through doing the time, you can call up their office, and if you have a question about something, ask. We're here to work together. And I know you, um, call and see, and this is going to give us the, you know, this is the mayhem part, the meat of the budget. Okay?
Now, to make certain that you all clear, are we talking about each agency that has come before us that's reflected in this budget?
Each agency that's in here and the ones that's coming.
Okay, that's what we're voting on, that's what we're working on.
That's what we're working on.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, maybe I could help some of the explanation. Dr. Brantley, you have, I hope you can hear me in here. I have, in your budget, you have the operating budget, and within that is a section called appropriations. I think that's what you're referring to. Appropriations are the individual...
The allegations.
...that come before you.
Yes, sir.
Um, you've had no specific discussion about those yet. What Ms. Burgess is going to do is she's going to provide you a summary of each entity that came before you and their requests.
Okay, and the, alright, alright.
And so that, uh, hopefully...
That's what I was looking for.
At a later date, you could go through those.
Okay.
Today, we're really more prepared today to talk about the operating budget.
Right, very good. We're on the same page.
Okay, good. You had asked me that question earlier a couple days ago, so I figured that's where you were headed.
Right.
And you asked about it in previous years, and you're right. I don't know that in every year...
We have not.
...we have gone through that.
No.
In the operating budget as it stands, Dr. Brantley, we have, uh, there are a couple little caveat in my memo, but I believe all of them have been funded at the same level they were last year. And so I don't, I don't usually touch those. I allow you all to do that, to see if you want to do something different or accommodate a request or move money around with all that appropriation. I think this time, it's a great opportunity to talk a little bit about the budget structure. This is a unique year in that it is the implementation of a reassessment year. And I know that some of you have had experience with that. We've lived through it two or three times, and you need to, you need to probably see the work. We thought it'd be helpful to you to see the work, to show you the process of how we implement millage and the rollback in a reassessment year. It's a challenging task, and it is Ms. Burgess's first time to do it, and she's doing a great job at it. And I have to compliment her on, not only is she doing a great job at it, but she is, uh, she's perfecting it along the way. And she had reached out to get, uh, help from state agencies to ensure that we're doing it correctly. And even beyond that, she hosted, uh, the state agencies to come down and explain the process and invited all the neighboring jurisdictions to attend that as well, because we all have to do the same thing, to include the school district, and so they'll be doing that, too. So the millage you see here in your budget currently for the school district will not remain. That will have to be calculated with the rollback.
Exactly.
Um, just some basic things about the reassessment is, we have an assessor's office. I'm telling you things you know, but the public doesn't necessarily know, especially if you're a recent resident, moved from somewhere else. I came from Maryland. Maryland didn't do it this way. But the reassessment is done in-house by the assessor's office. They currently have, I think, 10 employees?
10, yes.
And they're asking for two more, right?
Correct.
And those folks are trained professional assessors, and they assess the value of every parcel property in the county. In other states, a state agency does that in a uniform fashion. In South Carolina, Native Creek County does that, okay? So that's a huge task, and so they gear up for that and get through that in the five-year interval, and then, of course, you implement it. This reassessment, the values have gone up, no surprise, right? We've all seen the cost of housing, right? Uh, the last reassessment, everything went down. And the law was written, it was kind of silent in that. We didn't know if we could roll up versus roll down. And Beaufort County sought Attorney General's opinion and said, yes, you could, and so that's what we did. So I think if I could just allow Ms. Burgess to talk you through the bones of the budget and the millage and how we get there, but specifically in a reassessment year, your millage is going to go down, and it always has for this one. But values have gone up, so there's a balance there, and you have to be comfortable with what millage rate you give us policy direction to set to. And that's basically our goal here at the end of the day, to try to come out with some policy framework from you and the council about where you would like us to go with this budget.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm making a record. See if I could, may need to use that. So when the Department of Revenue came in to make your presentation, they provided us with a calculation, and it's basically math, except that the numbers are sometimes difficult to obtain because the formula is the prior taxes levied in the year before divided by what they termed an adjusted new reassessment value. So you have to do, you have to obtain those numbers from various sources. And the highlighted in blue is, um, right here, this number. So what I did was I reached out to the auditor, and I have not been able to obtain, theoretically should be the number, amount taxed as of October 2021. Um, she's, we've been working together to get a report that gives me that number, don't yet have it. So in order to determine or have a place to start, I went back to the June 30, 2021 report she provides to the state. So the assessed value for the county was 17,920,230. So, um, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong one. It was 156 million, 391,051, that's Cherry Point, that's another one. I had to add in vehicles, that's 8,42,000. So there was a total of 164,433,058, which was the total assessed value as of June 30, 2021. So our operating millage rate is 142, and that left us, that calculated out to 23,349,494. And this deduction is for, let me think why I did that. That deduction, 1,009? I'll have to come back to that, I can't remember. Anyway, it was calculated to be 22,239. I should have put a note there, and I did not. This thing has been, this is a cleaned-up version of my mess. So I have to go back and figure out what that was, and I'll tell you that. So that's where the 22,239,922 came from. And then the adjusted new reassessment value. So we start with, this is the final assessment for this year. This is after the reassessment. It's 156,347,268. That comes from the assessor. There's a, um, in that, in this number is an amount for new growth, and that assessed value is 10,738,105. And I, and you cannot include that. That's basically how you adjust your, um, that's the adjustment you make to your assessed value, because you cannot tax, you cannot calculate your rollback millage based on new growth. So we took, take that out. Now, um...
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Just have one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the Cherry Point is included in the total assessed value? Is that in there, or is that separate?
It is in there, and then we do it separately, too, because Cherry Point's taxed at those, but... So, but I'm doing it separately here to get Cherry Point's rollback millage. So, um, I also have, uh, amounts, and I can show you that, but I think it would just be a little bit too much right now. So this is, so I have amounts for this year based on the auditor's numbers that she reported for business, personal property, aircraft, boats, motors, et cetera. However, again, I can't include any new growth in those numbers, and I cannot identify what is new growth in those numbers. It's not easily identifiable. So I thought, in order to be conservative, I would go back to what these numbers were at the end of June 30, 2020. And so there, I know there's no new growth in them. So that's where these numbers come from. So that gives me the 193,923,058, which is, which is up here, this number. So you just divide that into it, and our rollback millage is 114.6, which is considerably less than 142. And they made a point, the Department of Revenue makes a point of saying, you do not round up, you truncate, and you can only go four digits. So that's why this is .1146 rather than 1147. So this year, Jasper County happened to be the fastest-growing county, apparently, in the state. So we were allowed to have four point, every county can do 4.7% based on increase their millage, a 4.7% for inflation. The difference between 4.7 and 9 is our growth factor, and we can take it up to 9%. So I did that. So if you take this 1146, multiply it by 1.09, you're at 1.249.
Okay. If you're rounding off...
Truncating, yes, sir.
Yeah. Usually, is it not true when you're rounding off, you round it off to the highest, the next highest number if that last number is five or more?
Correct, but we can't round. We can only truncate. So the fifth number, we can't use it all. We can't use it to round up or down.
I see.
Or, so we just have to truncate it.
Okay.
So, so if I put in, I'll just show you. So if I put in .1146 here, ah, come on, let me do it. Well, I want it to work. Probably because I'm not connected to the internet, but it should work just because... That won't let me. Accessibility. All right. So if I put that in, it would be considerably less than the 44 million that we have right now. Our budget is 46 million at this point. So if I could, I'll have to see if I can get connected here in a minute, but... So 1.146 doesn't provide us with enough revenue for the budget. 1.249 doesn't provide us with a new, with enough revenue. So what we can do is we can go back three years, and we haven't used any of our allowable millage increases in the last eight years. But we can't go back eight years, we can only go back three. So going back to fiscal year 1920, we would, we would have been allowed to increase our millage rate 4.46%. So that leaves us with, uh, .0068 or 6.8 mills that we could add to that 1 point, that .1249. So that's where this number comes from. And then, that's still 1.317, which isn't sufficient. So we, again, I went back to the next, the second year back. We could do 7.6, so I added that in. That gives us .1393. And, uh, again, we felt like that wasn't sufficient, so we added point, of this 10.3, we added .07. And that brings us up to 140, which is this number. Now, you have to, um, we calculated it, we have that local option sales tax credit, so that basically reduces the amount of taxes that we bill. It's going to be, as I've calculated it right now, 2.682861 because we have a carry forward from last year. We actually generated a credit greater than we gave to the taxpayer, so we have to carry forward, it's about $126,000. So we have to add that in. Then we have the nickel plate taxes, so that comes out of the, and that's the 40%, and then I'm adding in the fee and lieu, which I, which the state has provided an amount which appears to be about 2.1 million. And then other revenue, I have it listed below, is 12,987. So that gives us 41,215. Right now, our budget is at 46, so that's a considerable difference. We have the cash carry forward of 3,250, which leaves us with 44,465, and we're still, we still have to find reductions in the budget of 1.5 million dollars in order to make this balance. So I know that's a lot of numbers, and it's, and I, if I, if I'm going to try to get onto the internet here and see if I can, if I can change this number and show you how dramatically it changes it. But do you have any questions so far?
Madam Chair, if I could help with a question, sorry. Now, Bill. Was the new growth value, right?
Yes, sir.
The new growth this year, can you explain that to the council in terms of what that, that appraised or assessed amount is and how much new cash does that mean?
So...
But if I understood her correctly, that cannot be added at this time.
So what we do...
Can't be added to your millage calculation.
But it does get added to our revenue calculation.
But it's new money you will receive.
Right.
So, so the growth is, um, let me go back to this one. So our growth was 10 million, our assessed value was 10,878. So that's included in this, um, it's included in this number here, sorry, this 208, 764. That's the total assessed value. So if you take that 10 million and basically take it by whatever millage rate, say 140, if I can do it, I can't do it. Um, I can't calculate it, thank you.
I'm asking the questions that I get asked on the street, and I assume you do, too.
Okay.
So 1,533,34.
So all the new growth...
That's at, that's at 142. Do you want to do it at 140? Let's do it at 140. Still the same, 1.5 million.
So all the new growth value is 1.5 million. So you'll often hear, well, you made a lot more money this year because of all this growth. Why are my taxes not going down, right? You made a million and a half dollars. I think just if you scan through the memo of mandatory increases that you have, they eat that up pretty quick.
And I did bring that, if you want to, the list of those, if you want to see it.
State mandate? Yes, sir.
State mandate.
And also internal costs for us, like, you know, health insurance, retirement, all those things. They, nothing goes down.
Right.
Everything's up.
There's probably something easy I'm not doing there, but anyway.
What was the difference? We skipped a year, right? Last year, we didn't do the assessment.
You're just implementing it, yes, sir. You did, I actually did it last year, and you're implementing it this year.
This year. So we had growth, we had double the growth.
Could it, could it have, could it have been worse as far as the values going up this year? Maybe so. I don't know enough about sales to know that, but, yes, sir.
But would that have also, you, I guess you can't know how it affected?
I will dig into that and see if I can find an answer for you. I don't know.
I mean, did we benefit, did we benefit for holding off, or did we benefit for, we lost the benefit?
Didn't we put growth in last year? We had a number for growth.
We had a number for growth, but we didn't have a number for reassessment.
What, that's what I'm saying, but we caught growth last year.
Yeah, didn't use that as part of the millage formula for reassessment.
Just another thing, while we're, when you do the value, uh, cost of a mill or a value of a mill, right? That doesn't take into effect, how does that take into effect with filos? I mean, how does that work? Do you separate it out then?
Yeah, Kim has those separated in your budget. Kim, you don't use those as part of that calculation?
No, they're not used at all.
And if you look at the revenue...
Because they're taxed.
The revenue for the filos is, is it still about the same, Kim? It's about 2.5 million?
The filo?
Yes.
Two point, well, we calculated 2.1.
2.1, so, uh, again, you've all done great work. We've got a lot of new filos, but they all have at least five-year performance clauses in them. So you won't start to receive taxes from them or fees from them, typically, if anything of a meaningful size, until several years from now.
But filos are not included in the rollback. They're just included in your filo revenue for the budget.
Correct.
And one thing I also wanted to say is, there's another frequent question I get is about new sales of homes, right? If you, if you purchase a home, and as you know, the prices are high, you purchase a $400,000 home, you're going to be taxed at $400,000, right? It's called a good sale, right?
A T I.
A T I. And that's what you're going to get a tax bill on. Now, you can try to appeal it, but usually the next reassessment is when it gets caught up. So you'll, Mr. Kemp, you'll probably be aware of that. You probably have people in your neighborhood that are paying different taxes on the same street because of that. Somebody's just come in, you know, sooner than the next guy, and they're taxed at the exact same value of whatever they paid for it.
That's a result of the 15% cap.
Yeah, the 15%.
You can only raise taxes on existing properties 15%, but if you sell the property, it gets bumped up to the current value for the following tax year. So it gets out of whack for five years, it stays out of whack, and eventually it'll, over a number of years, we'll get closer and closer to being equal. The longer you own the house, the more benefits you get for the 15% cap.
The other thing is, I think we have an average, Susan, that we hit the cap, right?
Correct.
All right.
We hit the cap.
Values have gone up 15%, okay? And then I had a good discussion with her because I never really quite understood that, but she does it in areas of interest. So in other words, I'm not picking on anybody here, but, Mr. Kemp, in your neighborhood, your, um, assessment in that neighborhood is among comparable homes, but those values do not affect her review of where Dr. Brantley is, okay? So you can't automatically bring those values into your neighborhood, if that makes sense. She looks at them in areas of interest, okay? And fast forwarding to my point that I think I mentioned to a couple of you last time was, the problem with reassessment is your millage number may go down. But the next tax bill that someone receives may go up when they hit that 15% cap in the, um, in the new assessment. And I've got a tax bill right now from a gentleman, and I'm trying to do the math here just to show you some of that, the implications of that, how that works.
I do, I have a sample.
Oh, great.
I have, we did, let's see. It's in Excel, but...
You kind of have two things battling that. Good work you do in trying to bring things down and live within your means. You know, you're being, you're... You know, you're being, you're being bullied sort of by inflation and everything costing you more and the cost of businesses going up. You're also in what I call kind of a growth bubble waiting for the new revenue to come in because when a home is built, you know, you receive taxes for a year after. So you'll see a lot of growth and trees coming down and things getting ready to happen, but you're really about two years away from receiving property tax on those developments because someone has to be built and they're occupied for a year before you get that. So it's coming. You just don't have the revenue from that. And as I said, filos will be a little slower to produce that revenue. It's all very good information. It's just not as fast as a lot of people think coming in.
So this was a, this was a resident, last name Donahue, and Susan provided me with their tax bill. So last year in 2021, their value was 14,140. This year with the reassessment, it would be 16,280, which is the 15% increase. So last year, they paid 2,788 in county operating and 16968 in the, the mil, in the debt service. This year... Double check. C11. Ah, that's wrong. So this number is, this number is correct. Now we're going to pay 1,97960, which is a $28 decrease. Then their operating, we kind of, I went over it with the school district and their rollback right now is 84, from 166 to 84. If they kept it at that, then these, these residents would pay 1,18776, which will reduce it 1,159.49%. Their, the Hardyville operating, as I understand it, is going down from 112 to 97, so that's a decrease of $212. Their credits would be less, would be less because of the homestead exemption would be based on the school district's millage rate and then the loss credit, which would be the combination of the county and the Hardyville. So they would pay approximately $240 less this year than last year.
Kim, how do you, how do you do the homestead exemption?
So that, there's a number I get basically, but that number is whatever the operating, operating millage rate is for the school district because the school district cannot base their tax, their revenue, tax revenue on residents of the camp, or permanent residents of the camp, those who have applied for the homestead exemption.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out how you compute versus how the order of compensation. Because in homestead rebate, everybody gets the same rebate?
This is, this is not the rebate. This is what the taxes are on that amount. So the rebate is already included in, in some part of the 16. But when you do the, when you look at the calculation, they give them a loss credit there.
Kim...
I think I'm not saying that right. I think I'm confusing.
I think what happens is, okay, there's two types of homestead. Let's assume, this is usually over 65, which you could extract, was it $50,000?
I wish I could calculate.
That is deducted off the value of the home before they do all the other calculations. So if your home is worth $250,000, yeah, if you're over 65, you pull $50,000 off. So your value is then calculated $200,000 for all downstream. That's not the way it's done. I don't, I mean, that's, that's hard. That's why we're calc, what I'm trying to say is, you're calculating one way, but actually it's a different way.
No.
Because, yes, because in my neighborhood, we compare all the houses. Now, there's diff, each house is different, right? So I have the lower priced house. I go to the higher priced house, the same exemption comes, they have, they get returned the same money.
For the homestead exemption?
Yeah.
That's, that's, a different thing is the school board rebate for having a 4%.
That's what, that's what this is, that's for the...
6% of second homes don't get it. Primary residents don't pay school board taxes. They pop off and the state supposedly pays the school board. That's a slightly different calculation or a different number.
This amount is only for the school district amount. So that's why it's being taken out because they're not...
Right.
You can't tax on that amount.
I try to think of it as the school board exemption and the, I'm a primary resident or over 65 exemption. One comes off the top, the other comes...
Okay, I understand. Right? Schools returning the money.
And then we have had the discussion before about the local option sales tax and the credit. It's a great thing to have because you have to provide 70% of the traffic back to the taxpayer tax relief. But I don't know how it performs this year, but in the last few years, it's gone down the credit because the only explanation I can have is that the number of people you got to spread it out to is growing larger and faster than the rate of spending on items that qualify for local option sales tax.
I wish I could actually do something with this. I'm not sure why it's not, maybe because it's saved on the hard drive and not, I can't seem to save it anywhere.
Also in the local option sales tax, we have tremendous retail sales numbers, but vast majority of the numbers we have, it does not apply to the local option sales tax. For instance, the automobiles, right? The taxes are capped on autos, boats, RVs and all those kinds of things. So that doesn't apply.
See, I've got it on this hard drive and I can't seem to get it to... Yeah, I was kind of putting it that way. Let's see if that works. Didn't get that?
I got screen to Andy and Kim.
Hey, Kim.
I think...
Just, that screen's not going out over the internet. Okay.
I think we're doing a good job here at Jazz. Lift out of taxes, but we run into a lot of trouble, problems with, we try to explain the taxes and how we arrive at certain numbers. And some of us really don't know what we're talking about. So I would advise that if you have a question brought to you and you don't understand, just like the councilman grabbed it here, he called up Mr. Fuldrew to find out the appropriate answer. And we have to start doing more of this so that all of us will be preaching the same sermon to people. Because right now, some of us are killing the family and we have to stop. We have to stop and let's look at things from a positive perspective. And it's a lot on the budget that we would like to see more and more and more. My mother used to use the term, if you can't squeeze blood out of turnips. Can't squeeze blood out of turnips. And we're going to try to keep this budget, I always liked to use the term calm as we possibly can. And we know when people ask for things in their budget, they usually have like a 15 or 20% increase or more than what they really need to be sure they get what they asked for. So we want to be very, very careful as to how we handle this budget because in my opinion, things are not looking too good in America. Not looking too good. And we may hit a dead drop at any time, at any time. So let's concentrate on the budget, what we can do with it and start concentrating on the negative of the budget. Ready, Kim?
I'm trying to take a new approach to, so I can actually make some changes there. Let's see if I can do it this way, but it's not letting me.
It's not working, we're not, we're not going to sweat back. You have to explain it to us. Like I said, we need to explain it again.
I'll be happy to.
Explain it again, even if we have to do some Zoom meetings in between, we'll do that, but want everybody to understand what's happening with this budget.
So where we ended up is that we're about 1.5 million dollars shy with, if we, if we roll it back to 140 versus 142, then, then we have to find in the budget, we have to cut 1.5 million dollars. So that's where we are. If I could play with the numbers like I had intended to, I could see some other things. Let's see. Oh my gosh. I don't know why, it doesn't work.
Where we would typically go from here with that explanation is we would prepare some information for you, Dr. Bradley, on the appropriations for you to consider those because again, looking for, current budget, looking for 1.5 million dollars to all those agencies, no new agency appropriations and all those other agencies funded just as last year. It may not be what you want to, right? So I really need you all to do that part to decide what you want to do there. And then we will chip away with trying to provide some suggestions of how you can chip away at the budget to try to get to at least that 1.5.
So you're saying that if we chip away at 1.5, that will be a balanced budget at that point based on the budget that you presented?
Yes, sir. Based on the 140, 40, 140 versus...
Yes, 140.
See, at first when they were telling me about the budget, I thought we were home free.
I did too.
We did too.
They're saying the best for last, I guess, when they tell us, no, you got to cut this budget a million quarters over.
So, well, I, I had the Department of Revenue look over the spreadsheet that I showed you and so they agreed with going back to last year for the personal property and all that. And we worked through a way to determine what the taxes were that were levied. That could change if I get some, if I can get with the auditor and get a better number of what was actually billed in October of 2021. So that, that would, I'm imagining, I would imagine that there would be, have been more taxes billed in October of 2021 than there would have been billed in October 2020 because of the growth, et cetera. So once I get that number, that will help with, I mean, we're still not at a final number, but if we, if we are at 140, then we have to have 1 point, we have to find my 1.5 million.
And I didn't mean to say we wouldn't be looking at revenue too. We'll be scrubbing the revenue to see if we forgot anything. I will tell you, this budget is assumed that the road fee will, will, will last. David, you got the latest on the road fee?
The road fee has been sent to a conference committee between the Senate and the House, but what attached to it was not what the House agreed to. So we don't know the latest, the latest version, if they did reach agreement and took what the Senate added on, would be that if you have a tax in effect in 2021 when they rule, you get even. But if you wanted to do a new tax, you got to take it to a referendum. So that's what we're waiting for, the decision in the next moment. And there's a lot of, a lot of pressure from a lot of counties and cities on their representatives. There were at least two editorials over the weekend of different papers from the staff saying you ought, you ought to give the counties the relief, blow a hole in everybody's budget. For example, Rainbow's got a $30 million hole.
So we have assumed that that will go forward based on, like Mr. Keller saying, Ori County is a huge one, they all have huge fees, they have fee revenue. Ours is about 600,000, 660, 660,000.
Is this a good time to talk about the fix that Aitken County is trying to do that I was going to bring forward? Budget amendment, a couple of counties have added in budget amendments that try to copy the language that the Supreme Court used and said, this is how you justify it. So they're back, they're making the findings of fact that justify the road fee to beginning back to ours and they've added it all as a budget amendment from the past year to keep things going. So I, I've been researching it and I believe I'm going to bring you something for second meeting that they add in those amendments to perhaps fill the gap. We should put legislation out, act this year, we have to wait till next year to act.
As I said, everyone is having to do this, all the other entities are having to do the rollback, learn into it and have the same conversation with their governing bodies, the town, the city, the school district. I don't know what the town originally is doing, we haven't had, but we did get an indication from the city and Mr. John Boylan's, their finance director, has been, has been great. He attended the workshop. We had some conversation back and forth with him and he gave us an idea. Kim had that scenario of where the city is headed with their knowledge, which is very helpful because, I mean, you know, we have layers of that so you can try to figure out what the net effect is on the property.
In fact, it should be quite high because if you go two years ago, that's when you're going to, takes a year to get that tax up. So like I bought a house in November, I paid $86 for that year. For the next year, the year after, I went up to $2,600. So you can probably go take the, the certificate of occupancy two years ago and extrapolate out what's going to be higher load, not maybe the number, but is it going to be higher or lower?
I'm sorry, what number are you going?
The certificate of occupancy.
That is a...
For tax.
You're fine, what?
For, you were talking about a tax. So if you can forecast a little bit by saying, okay, two years ago, at least Hardyville, I know, had a record, had a record certificate of occupancy. So that's going to go, not next, the year after, but the year after that.
Right, right.
So...
I think Ms. Wade can do that. She, she receives all of those, so she's the one who puts it on the book. And she mentioned in our meeting just a week or two ago, last week?
Last week.
That she's having this response. There was a time for several years, some of you may remember, where we had, we had difficulty receiving permits from the city and the town.
Right.
And it was a, we had to collect them, call them for them and, and sooner the best, the sooner you get them on the books, the sooner we can bill for them. So they corrected all that and so they're coming in very well. She has a system to collect them and they send them to drop box and then she, she picks them up physically.
Right, they go to...
So apparently that's working very well. Something to hear that. Helps both of us, right?
Well, I don't know. It's getting there slowly.
As a sendback chair, we will, we will provide the list of potential cuts that we would like to recommend to you and, and then we will scrub the revenues and we will also prepare that list for the appropriations, Dr. Bradley. And when we have all those items together, then we can, we'll be ready to meet again. And the decision on when you want to meet again is... And the decision on when you want to meet again is, uh, is important because you don't have a whole lot of time. You're scheduled to have the public hearing, the second reading on June 6th.
We just got a text here from Dr. Anderson. She wanted you all to know that the schools must request a millage increase. Just because if they don't, they're going to be able to see, have a serious problem.
And we're talking about a millage increase from where they were this year.
Right.
From where they were, or from the rollback.
We'll clarify.
Due to the, due to the rollback, rollback.
It's, uh, as I said, it's time to talk to your client to meet him, uh, but the rollback, the state also has the counterbalance of allowing you to raise your mileage to make up for that paying. And there's a reason that it is adjusted based on the growth of your area because that's very expensive when you grow, you have to provide services. And so, um, I don't know if you congratulate us or not, but you're a fast and growing county in the state. And so you're able to raise your mileage higher than any other county, okay? Uh, not a distinction that you necessarily want, but there is that tool there for you to be able to keep going. And as, uh, as Kim said, you've kept your power dry for the last eight years, you haven't had any increases flow away. And I'll, I'll remind you all, when all this is done and you put the budget to bed, then I'll do my comparisons, uh, with, uh, with neighboring counties. We'll try to see where you stand with neighboring counties. That's sort of how you benchmark with the other counties' power.
I give up.
Okay.
I can change this, but I can't make any changes, I don't think. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Because we need to see.
There we go.
Let's, as I say, we might have to do a.
So if we did this at.
Virtual.
If we did this at 1146, which is the actual rollback, with leaving everything else the same, tax credit would be the same, you would have taxes of 20 million, 900,000, and we would have to find 6.7, almost 6.8 million dollars.
That is a great, that's a great thing to take away, right? So to, to help explain this. And perhaps we'll do that too, perhaps we'll do some bullet comments for you, um, some talking points, but it's always helpful for me to do that. So Madam Chair, with that, uh, we know we're going to need to have a budget workshop. And we know we're going to need to have it prior to, to, so, um, do you want to think about that now or do you want us to get together and try to figure out when we might be able to do that?
Um, but. Get it out there. It's me, what day? The year has rolled by so fast. All right, but these 23, we are here. All right.
Problem is we're running into a holiday and in order to get documents and everything prepared for the 6th, Ms. Simmons has a deadline, we're all scared of her for getting the materials together for the council meeting. And that would be, what would that be? Would that be June the 1st?
That'd be our deadline.
Well.
Everything has to be up by New Year, June 1st.
June the 1st, that's the law, so that's what we have to do, so we have to, we have to meet pretty quickly.
Would they, um, what about Wednesday?
You mean 25?
Yeah.
Or ended, oh gosh.
Yeah.
26, I suppose, too. We don't necessarily have to have anything else.
It'll be better.
Do you have travel plans for the weekend?
For the morning? Can't nobody come to work on the budget.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're trying to make it painless as possible.
Yeah, they're going to be out of town.
You're going to be out of town for the weekend?
But, um.
We could do that Friday, 27, unless that's considered a weekend. Can you Zoom after?
Can you Zoom in?
Your Zoom call?
If I can do it, draw the, um, my daughter, granddaughter, granddaughter's birthday.
Okay.
And you're talking Friday, the 27?
Yeah.
You have a Monday morning meeting already scheduled. I mean, a Friday morning meeting scheduled.
I thought that was Thursday. Yeah, I've got Thursday. I have.
Want to be there in the evening?
Deposition. I can do a Zoom call Friday on the 27 sometime.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You call on Friday?
Is the deposition is what I was thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's doing two parts, but we're doing.
You're doing Thursday and Ronnie's doing Friday, okay?
I believe.
Okay, so what time could you be available on Friday?
Any time at all, any time at all.
Okay.
Maybe Friday morning to get it up with.
Yes, Friday morning and let's do a Zoom meeting.
That's great, at least we can show you where we are.
This Friday? Yeah, the 27. Yeah, they're, um, they're similar, one or similar to.
John at 8:30?
About 8:30 for Adam and his son. That's what we got to do.
What day is it then? 27?
27. Eight, eight thirty.
Zoom?
Yeah, Zoom.
Right, you're right.
Eight thirty. And like, um, you know, it's the holidays, so we want to get you up early and get you before you start drinking. I don't want to come and listen, yeah, I love it, you listen to me.
Well, we appreciate your patience with this. I know it's a lot of information, but, uh, we're doing the best we can to try to get you to the best place we can.
That's all we can do.
Madam Chair, you do have, um, a guest speaker that's.
He is?
No, he's due to arrive around, uh, let's see what, I think around 10:30. And so you've got some extra time.
Yeah, we asked what the schedule is for this, okay, so now, we have a few minutes. Or a lot of council asking questions, if they have any questions about search. Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, on, uh, the RV and boat tax rate. What is that? Is that taxed at 10% or 6% for boat taxes and recreational vehicles? Do you all know, copy it? You got your assessment page?
I do, if I can get out of this and go to there.
The only caveat on those is liver board, you can get 4%. Those are very few.
And then while you're looking at it, Kim, um, the, uh, request 710,000 for 10 fire and rescue personnel, six fire and rescue at Tillman slash Carvera. Obviously Tillman is operational and needs staffing. Carvera is a ways out. So I questioned the six there. I know that we need to have grades in Point South staff 24/7. So obviously, in my mind, warranted a new fire inspector. We currently have one, correct?
Ah.
So this would be an additional fire inspector?
One for the south end, one for the north end of the county.
So the fire inspector, is that like a fire investigator? Or what, what is he inspecting?
It actually inspects fire safety and it's a, leaves a requirement of our ISO.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That, and our 1%, our 1% fire that, that we get from insurance premium, we're required to have a fire inspector too.
Exactly. So two is what's required for us to, to meet our obligations there?
Yes.
Okay.
Justice Al, I did want to mention a little thing about that, that we are going to be reassessed for ISO, I believe it's in July.
Yeah, and I know that the Marsh Cove Fire Station is, is a little bit behind schedule.
It's in the legal book, right?
Yeah, and so that'll, that'll, I'll have additional questions on that because we need to make sure that those people who are in an ISO of 10, within a five mile radius, they are going to get the benefit that they deserve. On the telecommunications, um, how many people do we currently have staffed in that department? This, this dispatcher's right?
Correct. Correct. And they, they want to, um, have, want to move one of the dispatchers into more of a management position. And they also want to hire someone, and maybe within, move someone into more of a electron, the, the electronics IT that is required especially, especially for that department. Then they need to hire additional dispatchers because the ones that we have are being seriously overworked. And I think there's, um, as far as their overtime, they don't get, they don't get any time off, you know what I mean? They're just constantly on. And I can pull that up too. I can tell you how many we have one day.
That's fine. I know the first four items, you know, check of our controls, 14 pieces for retirement insurance, et cetera. On the legal fire department, nine additional fire and rescue personnel. Is there going to be the volunteers included? Is that volunteer program still going to stay in effect and?
They're going to try to keep it in.
They're working, you know, they're working through this, we're all working through it now. But this, yeah, this is the, assuming that everything goes fine, we have the transition, this is what it will take for us to that question.
Is that to meet an ISO rating?
Uh, it's to meet a standard which is, is, um, I think based on the same one at Mee Road, which is currently the requirement of the community to work with us. And I think it's needed as well. We're not over asking it, but.
The Sheriff's Department request, um, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, but I believe his request for additional, uh, employees, was that at eight or 10?
He had five and then he wanted, then he mentioned in the meeting 20 deputies. I believe he had five in the actual budget that you have now, that he had requested those five.
We can, we funded off five that he requested.
We did, we did.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's what I'm looking at, I just want to make sure because that, public safety is our first priority. And I know that we, we're heavy on fire and rescue, which I fully support, but we seem to be a little light on the Sheriff's Department's request. We have a look at, um, dollars being spent.
So we, we calculated that a single deputy is about $100,000. So if we funded 20 deputies, it'd be like $2 million. So.
And then on account under firefighter department on 2307, carry forward 300,000 from last year?
From, from this current year, they, they haven't been able, they had plans to, to do various repairs to equipment and the supply chain issues have, which apparatus, and the supply chain issues have created problems finding those, waiting for an ambulance. They were trying to find a chassis and they called all over the country to find a chassis to build a new ambulance and they were in a bidding war with three or four other, um, you know,
Yeah.
fire departments who, or EMS who, all over the country who wanted the same chassis. So they haven't been able to, to spend, or expend what they planned this year. So they thought they would just carry it forward into next year to, to use. So hopefully things improve as far as supply chain.
I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can for the Sheriff's Department. And I'll go back and look at what his requests were. And then also, just, just going back to Tillman slash Carvera, my family donated the property for the fire department there. I know we've got the, the well, well in, uh, we've done the surveying and all those other things there. Is that really, I mean, uh, when are we going to start work on the, on the actual site? Because that, does that even need to be included in this year's budget is my question? Because if we could take some of those monies, if so, and put those towards the Sheriff's Department.
Excellent suggestion, let us take a look at that for you. That's all I got for now, I just wanted to check on.
Your first question about the assessment ratio, let's monitor 10 and a half percent.
Why can't we reduce those down to like 6%?
Well, I want you to mention that, um, Mr. Salz is bringing up the assessment ratio, not the actual sales tax and purchase of, of the personal property tax.
Correct.
And, uh, if you'll see aircraft, which is number two, set down to 4%. The state, uh, passed legislation back in 2004, 2005 that allowed a county to bring it down to the bottom of 4%. And the county council chose to take it, I think it was a 10, have down to 4%. And you may recall of being along, uh, last season, that the vehicles, and David, you can help me with this, vehicles were at a higher rate and they, they reduced down to the six percent. Uh, I have often thought the same thing, that it would be delightful if you could have a separate mileage for a different assessment ratio for vehicles.
Maybe, well, take my memory and see if I'm remembering this right. The state allowed counties to create a program to, I want to say buy down the boat rate, similar to the airplane rate, if I'm remembering correctly, or is that just something they were proposing at one time?
I don't remember that, I don't remember, so maybe.
I would like for us to look at that and see about including that in this budget, because I mean, that, it's not that many boats.
Right.
We, and, and I, I think that's the, it's out of, it's not equal.
It's just tickling my brain, Mr. Salz, but I can't tell you the story.
I mean, if we don't tax airplanes which are recreational, I mean, I guess their business is huge too, but I mean, if, if 4%, why would we not have boats at least down to where the cars are at 6% instead of 10 and a half? That's, that's way out of whack.
We will look at that because that is also something I wanted to ask you about going forward on the vehicles. If we could potentially float some legislation or ask our delegation to look at that. And if you could get some permissive, um, legislation, not mandatory, that would allow you to reuse the mileage on vehicles, when and if you're, you're someday flush and can cut some taxes, it'd be nice to have that option that you could cut taxes on vehicles, which would affect more people than, than homeless. And that would affect all your renters as well.
Right. So is it possible that we can have a reduction on those taxes on recreational like a boat or RV?
I don't know, we're going to check on that for you to see if it is.
I can't re, I didn't remember correctly. A county has the power to, by ordinance, reduce to 6%.
We should do that because that's more of a penalization, leaving that at 10 and a half and everybody else is paying 6.
Can you, um, can you run those numbers, Kim, to see what that would look like?
Do you know what, uh, Buford has?
I think Eric says.
I think they did reduce, that's what, that was tickling my brain, Mr. Kim, I knew something had happened in my book.
So I'm all over the place, too, too fast for that.
It's all right.
I made a circular, uh, because this, this calculation is.
Well, can we conclude as you.
Actually, no.
Yep, 7882.
Yeah, you can, you don't have to show me right now, I mean, let's, let's do whatever.
Madam Chair, Mr. Salz, I have to double check on this because I think there's some qualifying criteria that's not across the board that you can get the 6%. It's only if you meet certain criteria. It's only if you meet certain criteria.
Some prominent resident or something.
Something like that. That's why I said, let me, let me, I'll, I'll find out for you, provide you with real information. I don't, I trust in my gut reaction and my own brain cells.
Doesn't apply to any center console fishing, I guess. Okay.
All right, so take it down. Let's see if I can get this to work.
That would make sense if there was a local residency requirement.
I, I think, I was looking at Dorchester County, which did it. I think it has to be classified as a primary residence in order you have to have a kitchen, you have to have bathroom, you have to have classifier because. But I'll, I'll find a form from another county and I'll pull up their ordinance so that you can see.
So it's about $100,000.
$100,000?
Yeah, well, from 1.5 to 1.6.
That's just, that's a very small impact.
So we need to include that in the ordinance? And that's assuming that all the beds and meters are residents?
Well, it, it. I mean, secondary homeowners, we could leave them at 10% because they're already doing that anyway. That would kind of keep it uniform. But for primary residents, people who call just to come in home, your boat tax would go down from 10 and a half to 6%. We can figure it all out later. That's something that is worth doing.
And bring the information back. I don't want just, we're going to do this one.
Great. One thing we need to look at too is our, those Trailblazers that we have and that excursion. I know they still run, but that's about all they do. They are, I mean, we, we've gotten a goodie out of that. I think that excursion is 20 years old, Andy.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. And it's still, I mean, it still runs, but that thing is, you know, it's not good for much other than cruising around town for local errands and stuff.
Except mainly at the airport.
Yes, well, that's, that's exactly what it's got a great use for.
That's, yeah, we've turned it over to.
And the Trailblazers are, I mean, they're.
I'll, I'll remind you, those vehicles go away when these vehicles.
When we get the new.
Part of that deal that we made trading.
You know, those Trailblazers might be something that could be used at the, at the airport too. I, I don't know. They all afford to wear that should be on there. It's for safety.
But we do.
Okay, well, yeah, my, my point is it's time for us to look at.
And if you all, you know, you have a new vehicle with the council.
Right, I was just going to say, we have a new council. That one did come in. It's a new Traverse. It's, it's white, it's sitting in the parking lot. It needs to have the decals put on it, but it's, it's the county council vehicle.
What happened to, you told us about the logo. That we kept everything the same.
And the car that we do have for the council, we want you to know, we don't want you just running all around town in all the woods and everywhere. We want the car to be nice when we get ready to go out of town. Have the same mileage on your good car and stuff. And like what I said, few of the cars we got, old cars, we can use that to run around the county and, but we want to preserve our car that we bought for the council. And I want to remind those councilmen, if you use it, you keep it clean. Because a lot of our cars are just going to be used. And we don't.
Are you saying there's a car that's allocated just for the use of the council?
Yes.
Where is that car?
It just got here. It's at the, uh, they were, just they were waiting, they were waiting for the decals to go. Want everything from the county to be labeled alongside the county.
I see.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe you have to take a business trip to Columbia or something. It's there for your use.
It's there for your use. It's, you know, you want to go somewhere, even the county, you want to look good. Um, yeah, but we don't want you taking it all in the woods and every which way. Let's take care of our stuff, and then after a while, you'll be able to get another one for the council.
Well, we need scheduling, Matt.
Well, yeah, they need to schedule because we don't want two councilmen in the morning at the same time.
They'll be scheduled through.
Through, that was clerk, they were, advocate, yeah. And we'll just work it like that. We, we, we.
We've also, we're working on arranging with the school district to provide the detail services when they're needed. They, the K facility provides that in teaching and the use of that scale. So we want to, we want to help them and help ourselves in the same way.
That's right. Does that keep up with the town? Keep up with the town? And then a question for Andy or Kim?
Yeah, I have one. Just on the accommodation tax, we have a third of 2,000. The last two years, we brought in more than twice as much, 150,000.
Two different types, isn't it?
Do we just hope, just keep it low? I mean, the third year, last third year, we were below.
So they're budgeted in different places. It's budgeted, there's the state accommodations tax, there's also the local, which includes hospitality. And the state accommodations tax, except for what goes, the 25,000 plus 5% is the only thing that the county takes out of that state money. The rest of that gets allocated to different organizations. So that's where you see the 32,000. The other is local, and the largest part of that is either in development services or in the airport to pay for the, the new bond. So again, the, the expenditures, we have a separate fund for accommodations tax from the state. Those expenditures get out, get expended out of that fund, and the amount that's due to the county comes in as well on that line I have made.
So how come that line item always goes to? You have 32,000, like this last year, I think it was 150,000 in that line? If you look at, if you look at the tax, those 32,000, and all I'm saying is, are we, are we taking that? We're looking for money. Is that part of the deal that we can?
It's not, we've, we've accounted for it. We've accounted for it.
I'm sure you've accounted for it.
We've accounted for it as, based on the estimates of what we think it will be. And that's, sometimes we don't know what that is. And if it, if we get more of a surplus state accommodations, it stays, it should stay within that accommodations tax fund because it has to be spent within the next two years. Basically, it has to be given to an organization. So there shouldn't be any excess, significant excess revenue from what we've calculated because it has to stay within that fund.
But even if there were, it wouldn't be our money.
Exactly, it's not our money.
Yeah.
We'd have to look at that because I'm not sure what you're talking about. I don't have to look at it. Let's see.
All I'm trying to say is, some of that accommodation tax, when you go to the parks, that could support the parks.
Right, right.
Rather than lower the expense, especially now that the park is there. They're, they put in, they're putting in a new dog park. It's a place where people come off the highway, have the dogs relief.
Thank you. We'll take a look at that and see if there's some help there.
I also think that maybe we should look at putting electric places to charge electric cars up the highway in there. Go to Tesla or something like that, and maybe we can get a fee out of that. Because that's, I think, the park, the way I look at it, park is trying to get people coming off the highway just for a rest or for something. And that'd be a, a good thing when you go on to Tesla. Chairman, Councilman, Bradley can say that Tesla puts on a map. Just another way of putting it on the map.
Dr. Bradley, that's a great question. Where do you, where do you charge your vehicles?
At the house.
If only, I mean, if you took a trip, how do you, how do you figure out where you?
Oh, we have supercharge stations all over the 95, up and down 95, all over the interstate.
Parkers have one.
Parkers, and right here in this.
Four, I think they have four stations.
I should tell you have no anxiety about them. You know that.
Absolutely none. I've gone to, to Mississippi and no problem.
Oh, okay.
None.
So just out of curiosity.
To recharge.
How many?
50. And, and at every charge station, you have food outlets.
What do they charge you to charge up at a?
Zero.
At a charging station?
Zero.
Zero?
Well, thank you for that education. I appreciate that.
Yep, I didn't hardly do, I didn't reach them, all over the valley.
Yep. Where do we each land? Phenomenon, yes. Where's the charge station?
There isn't a charge, not at this point.
Oh, okay.
But they have one in the making.
Yeah, I'm coming right along. And we're going to have to, I don't know, Andy, I'm thinking we probably consider it in the budget this year. But I don't know how we're going to be able to protect our park better. We got people coming into that park, staying. They have a big fire Friday night.
That's a, that's a, Sergeant Jasper?
Yeah, I did see some social media.
We have a big fire Friday night when I was coming from the school. And I thought they were burning off the whole side over there. And what I asked was what would be happening? They said people come and stay in the park, in the wooded park, you know? I guess on the back end. So I don't know what we could do to protect them. But that's a thought we need to just put it down mind, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, it's happening on my way. They work so hard to try and keep the park nice and everything. And getting all burnt off in a day. Got a problem. Well, it's 10:05, and you said we're expecting, I would guess at 10:00.
I think approximately, yes. We didn't put any time in there. We know he's going to be here maybe morning.
Well, we're going to take a break and get a bathroom break.
Okay.
And.
Yeah, how come it didn't give you so much time here? How, how much time?
No, you're ready? He said you're ready.
Okay.
But the first one is 2005, new personnel for, for 7,000, 710,244.
Yes, sir.
What's the new personnel there?
That's going to be the fire and rescue personnel, EMS, and fire and rescue for three different fire stations. There's six that they'd like to place at Tillman, Tillman slash Tarboro, two at Point South, and.
Okay, but we don't even have anything on that chart board yet.
I think that's what Mr. Sols was saying too.
Mr. Sols mentioned the same thing. We're going to check on that.
Oh, okay, okay.
So there might not be six by the time we're done.
So we can use that, that just up there, a steel number. The uniforms, 55,250.
Uniforms.
Can you give us the line item, Dr. Brandon?
It's 2645.
In which department?
It just says, um, department request, that's all it says. Uniforms, 2645, that's the number.
What page are you on?
It doesn't have the page numbers. It just has.
There's no page numbers on this report, unfortunately.
See?
26.
2645. You have pledged 55,250 in the uniform.
2645.
For whom do we buy uniforms?
We buy them for the fire and rescue personnel, we buy them for the sheriff, detention. I believe that's it. Maybe some shirts and things for parks and rest, but not uniforms.
That's quite a bit of uniforms. Wouldn't you think 55,000 for a uniform?
Uh, well, if I, if I knew more about it, I could find it. See if I can.
Yeah, I'm for buying uniforms, most definitely. Let's make, make certain that we have that very clear. I am for buying uniforms.
The question is, how many?
That's it.
I understand. I understand. I can't, I can't, I can't find a line item.
2655, look on your plan, see your place. Oh, okay. 2645.
40, 2645.
Yes, I can.
What, what?
Fire and rescue. It doesn't say that yet, but just a uniform.
What's your title?
See that?
What's your title?
Where?
So you look at this number here. This number may be.
Oh, I see, okay.
So you have to go to the department that is, and then you go to the number.
I see.
So you're, 046.
Fire and rescue.
645.
Okay, this is just for one department, then? Fire and rescue department. 55,000, that's quite a.
So they, they increased it somewhat for the, the inflation. They did not do that.
Uniform every day?
So we have, I'm trying to think, what's the number of personnel we have in that?
We don't even get on with that now. I tell you, that's a bit much.
I can.
You was all in there now.
Yeah, it got.
It might be that.
Exactly. Definitely the uniform, but what I'm saying is, you don't need to buy, you don't need to buy new uniforms every week.
Well, part of that is for new. Well, no, I'm sorry, I take that back because the new personnel line should have those in it. I can reach out to Russell and find out what they're thinking is behind that.
Very good. Let's keep moving. The next is, he says, this is still fire and rescue, new personnel, 79,000.
So that is actually a new department. I believe if you went a little further down, that is what they're calling the Community Risk Reduction Department. And that is for the fire inspector. And that, they have a, they're basically transferring the fire marshal and the code enforcement officer from fire rescue from Department 46 into this new department. And then they would like to bring on a fire inspector.
Okay, and this is going to be up in 2023, up and going?
Yeah, yes, sir, in fiscal year '23, yes, sir. That's the plan.
That's the one that.
Dr. Brandon. If it's not, then we can, he raised that up.
And Dr. Brandon, I'd like to draw on what you just said. We've just had a conversation, and we budgeted 100% for all these new positions.
Okay.
And given today's gas market climate, we may be able to back the stakes on that all.
Right.
So that, that would be one of our, our, well, saving measures.
Right, okay, very good.
The next is, um, Cherry Point Fire Department, 054, with uniforms, $18,000 for one, for one fire station. How many people you going to uniform?
There's actually two fire stations in Cherry Point. There's the Mead Road, and then hopefully Marsh Cove will be online soon. And then hopefully Marsh Coast will be online soon. So that will be the two in Cherry Point.
And how many persons do we usually have at these, uh, fire stations? Let's just say ten.
I think there's twelve, um, potentially twelve total. I'm trying to, um,
And if you gave, if you bought uniforms for each one of them for a thousand dollars, that's, I think that'd be generous. You still would need eighteen thousand.
Right. Paul, if you had the second uniform question, we'll, we'll get a rundown of what he does there. I'm sure you're talking about multiple young ones.
Right.
Uh, but we'll, we'll get that figured out before you even accounting what he was posting there.
Next is, um, the detention center, zero, five, eight. Uniforms, twenty thousand dollars. You don't have that many personnel at, um, fifty-seven, require that, half month duty?
We're supposed to have forty? We're supposed to have forty, um, people.
But that's where you put it in the budget, but if you don't need it, then.
We shouldn't spend it. We don't need it.
Move it over to, uh, general funds for other, I don't think.
Well, I think they're locked down. Is it three outfit?
That's what I'm saying.
Three or four outfits.
Report issue.
I tell you like this, oh, it's a, the church and government. Of the two biggest company that they were for.
For your uniforms.
You'd be surprised what we paid.
I know.
For those uniforms.
I know.
Same thing in the church. We wanted a Bible for the pope, five hundred dollars.
Okay, so, um, I can, I know the food is, um, I want to question that. Two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for foods. It depends on handmade. How much they.
It's a, it's a, it's a great example. We had this discussion the other day, uh, the food prices have gone up.
Right.
Uh, but, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we started.
And they're in and out. Okay.
You're talking about, you know, five thousand dollars for a meal, each, yeah, each meal.
Okay. Eight thousand dollars for the, um, uniforms to the coroner's office. Zero, seven, five.
That's absurd, eight thousand dollars.
Eight thousand dollars. How many do we have in there?
We have three.
And there's nothing but T-shirt.
Okay, we can make that.
Is that, could that possibly be for protective? Do they, I haven't looked at that.
You was on, man, you was on. You didn't say protective. Yeah, you got.
What I'm just saying is that what he's considering.
They got different things. But I have reference to the uniform for.
Eight thousand dollars?
For eight thousand dollars for a uniform.
Let's see what you have. Shirt.
We can check those. Make adjustments as we need to.
Is that the same line up for each of those?
The next one is, uh, zero, seven, eight, five.
Zero, seven?
Zero, seven, eight, five, Parks and Rec. The athletic program, forty-five thousand. What programs do we have, you know?
We have.
And how many, how many different places do we have?
I think, I think it's gonna require a little report back because we have several.
Right, okay.
Volleyball, the tail in here.
Right, okay.
Soccer. Now you can do a lot of activities. The Parks and Rec.
Yeah. Okay, how about, um, the engineering department?
Yes, sir.
Engineering, zero, zero, eight, zero?
Yes, sir.
The uniform, seven thousand dollars. How many people we have in the engineering? It says administration, so that means just those who are in administration with the uniform. So we have seven thousand dollars worth of administrative uniforms. Do you wear that kind of uniform?
I think that they have included all departments in that. I think they've included all of their, um, public works departments in that line up. So it'd be roads and bridges.
Yeah, they, they pay for it out of their, any sort of.
Right.
Doctor Brenner, what we're gonna do, uh, with the theme of the uniforms, we could go back and print a report on uniforms for the entire organization and how much you're spending on uniforms.
Right.
We can look at that.
Okay.
Can I, can I clear up something?
Sure, go on.
Yeah, yeah, it's something about Park and Rec.
Yes, sir.
Uh, they got a lot of activity going on. They got, um, youth football. They got, um, um, basketball. They got soccer. They got volleyball. I mean, I mean, you know, so you got a lot of kids and this, this one of the thing that I push from Park and Rec, uh, to try to keep these kids active. I mean, because, you know, and just like that, um, this, this soccer, soccer, gonna have, they have hundred and seventy-five kids, sometime hundred and ninety. You know, basketball, gonna have over a hundred or something, you know, so.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem. Um, um, department, zero, eight, eight. Litter control.
Probably need to put more money in there.
For New Life, thirty-eight thousand. You need more money for that? What's that?
New Life?
That's the New Life Center.
That's the drugstore. Drugstore. Life Center, drugstore.
Drugstore where?
It's in, uh, the Alco. They handle the.
So it's.
Just state mandate, I think.
Yeah.
State mandate.
And, um, I don't know whether y'all was keeping up with the, uh, need, but we on top of the list for, um, what's that here? The drugs that they take.
Uh, methyloate?
Huh?
Fentanyl.
Fentanyl?
Fentanyl. We on top of the list.
Yeah, they fraud not the model.
Yeah, Jessica, I answered. Wow. I was reading and looking at some of that stuff.
Yeah, you do. It's fraud not the model.
So there's an offsetting revenue for that thirty-six thousand because the state provides us with two different types of revenue. ABL and one eleven percent mini bottle. And that money comes in through our state aid. Part of it comes into our state aid. And then we have to pay it out to the, uh, New Life Center as our drug and alcohol education center.
Okay.
So there's like two thousand dollars just that the county provides, and then the difference of that is from the state.
Okay, all right, very good. That's a good indication. Um, the general fund, zero, one, zero. How are these determined?
Zero, one, zero. Are you?
Or, or, no more appropriately, zero, nine, zero. Department is zero, nine, zero. Agency appropriation.
So these were based upon last year's, uh, approved budget amount with the exception of, um, the, the, uh, Low Country Council of Governments, they informed us that they were gonna have an increase. And the other is, um,
Delegating.
The delegation, legislative, legislative delegation.
Just because they inform us, does that mean that we approve it just because they inform us?
Which one's the delegation?
I, I don't mean delegation. I'm talking about all of them now. I'm not singling out anyone.
No, but I'm just saying that one. I remember why I remember that one because if you don't give them a last, they say, you know.
I know, I know about that. But I'm just saying, I'm just talking about these other appropriations.
So all of the others.
Corporations in general.
Yes, all of the other appropriations remain the same as they, as they were approved last year. So they are not what the agencies came in and will be coming in and requesting of you. They are what was actually approved last year by, by you.
So are you saying these are not being requested for two thousand and twenty-three?
They are, but we did not make the presumption that you would honor that request or that you would consider that request. But we had to have something in the budget, so, so we put in what, what we knew was approved last year. And if there's any increases and the council wants to increase that, then we'll.
Or decrease.
Yes.
All right, very good. That's, those are my concerns. Thank you much.
But yeah, um, now the one for the delegation, I know that's correct and why I can speak on it because I was at their meeting. And at first we thought it was five thousand dollars. They were asking people for stamps. And we was wondering if there was really people in Iowa. But then she's old, uh, the Y M Z made a mistake and it was five hundred, so that's why I went, um, back.
So I have this, I don't know if you can see it. Um, this is all of the uniforms that every department has requested. Some of the comments. So last year, uh, the budget was a hundred and nineteen-five. So far it's seventy-seven, six oh eight. And, uh, the administrative, the total department request was a hundred and thirty-one, seven fifty. And administrative is twenty thousand dollars more at a hundred and fifty-one, seven fifty for the entire budget for every department that has uniforms. So, uh, we can go back and talk to the various department heads and see, uh, you know.
Right, let me ask you.
Chief, Chief Wells.
Question regarding uniforms. Uniforms are, are selected, scratch selected. Uniform are purchased by individual departments?
They are, they are. And they're procured that way. And from time to time, we, we shake that up a little bit.
Okay, let me ask you this. Is it possible that you can get a, a company that can supply all the uniforms that you need and you can negotiate?
Perhaps, perhaps. Um, as I said, we've had some fits and starts with this over the years and.
Because if everybody's using their own company, I'll use Mr. Clark and then I then, Mr., uh, Councilman Saul will use, um, Athens and so on and that kind of thing. And before you know it, your budget is out of whack.
Well, they, they do, they do. They have a prefer, as you can imagine, you're out for the right, you've been in this business before. They have a preferred vendor that they work with and they, they like a certain thing and they go to that vendor. And then, uh, and it's, you know, the sheriff's department will go somewhere different than EMS or whatever. And they do that along for a while until, um, and, you know, we bring their attention to it every now and then to try to shake them up, try, try to go out and get some different quotes.
Exactly.
And then I also interject, uh, we have a local vendor in Ridgeland who does uniforms.
That's it.
And I, I've pushed them over there too.
Exactly.
Show me that you can't get that over there.
That's correct.
But we don't, uh, you know, we do that every couple of years, but it takes a while to get back around.
Right.
We'll be mindful of that. I can have that discussion with them.
Very good. I'll trick and ask one question. I notice, uh, I know a lot of people love animals, but I don't have a problem with that. But then is, is we gonna keep raising, uh, um, the money for, for the, for the animal shelter? Because it seems like every year they're getting more, more animal. They jump from six something, six hundred, I think seventy animal to a thousand something. So how many damn when they gonna jump to this year? That they gonna come to us again for, for more. I mean, I mean, I mean, something got to be done here. I mean, you know, I mean, because we, um, we putting a lot, we putting a lot into these damn, and these, and, and these, these, these people that steady having, now they go to have puppies. And then they can them down and they brought them off and then we feed, we, we taking care of their dog like, um, better than we taking care of senior citizen. You know, I mean, I mean, I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, you know, because is, is, is it a, is it a stop point? Because like I said, the animal, if, if, if they, if they ain't got this much and ran over from last year and ran actually three hundred something higher, how many they gonna get this year? I mean, because, you know, we, we, we gotta look at that. I mean, because I think the senior citizen need to get a little more money and, and, and be thrown into, into this animal thing. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't, not people who not loving animal, but, but, but the animal pool is steady growing, you know? I mean, I mean, it got to be, I, I don't know how y'all feel about it, but it should be a cutoff on me. I mean, because it getting higher. Because if you jump from last year, six, seven to over a thousand eighty-one, what it gonna be this year?
Yes, the people can't feed the animals, so they turn on the lights.
You know? I mean, I can understand they keep it some of, but I mean, but I knew, um, I knew, um, I know a lady cat has had about twelve kittens.
They are a no-kill shelter and, uh, the arrangement is that you sort of outsourced that function to them back in the early two thousands. And, uh, you may remember, uh, before Drummond was created and that was around, the, the county did that function ourselves. We had one employee and it was a kill shelter. Virtually every animal was brought in there. We weren't about to, in a couple of days, it was killed. And, uh, that's what, that's what brought about the, the public outcry, uh, from some concerned citizens that they wanted to do something different. And that we're the only ones still doing that. They wanted to do a no-kill shelter. And so we challenged them, well, why don't you do it? And they said, okay. So we helped them, uh, created a nonprofit for them and, and started that out. At that point, we were paying them about the equivalent of what we were doing in our own corporation. And they were able to get extra grants, uh, and, and balance money that we weren't able to get. And so it worked very well. But over the years, they have struggled. They've lost, uh, I think, uh, they had a pet food supplier that, I think they lost three pet foods. So they've had some struggles over the years. But I guess the trade-off is, I understand your point, you know, how much is enough? How many, it's gotta drive up the cost. But it's probably worth having a discussion with that group with you to see what other outside money are they bringing in? That's not their whole budget. They've even got more money. And then, uh, then your decision would be whether you think that still makes sense or whether you, you'd like to do it on your own. The value of the costs associated with that would be.
We are, um, going to stop at this point. The guests, I assume he's the guest speaker. He's here. And we're gonna have some kind of questions and answer there. So I'm gonna turn this into the hands of the minister here to introduce.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Chris Johnson with us today. And Chris has worked for the county for, gosh, a number of years, uh, in a lot of different, um, labor law issues that we've had over the years. And, uh, I, uh, realized this morning that I didn't provide him a copy of the agenda, so he didn't know where it's going. And so we took care of that this morning. So he has no idea what it says on the agenda, but your presentation, your name is on there.
Okay.
Welcome to you. Can we get you anything? Make you more comfortable? You need a drink or something?
Yeah, I might get some water. And then just where do you want me?
Let me do that. I thought if you could just walk and talk in the corral here, it'd be easier. Do you, uh, do you need to set up your computer?
Yeah, I probably need to put it somewhere.
You can put it right here. I can move.
You have to apply and leave on, uh, course.
Is this, uh, your, your workman's comp, hazard?
Yeah, this, uh, you've been adequately warned.
Okay.
Chris, while, while you're doing that, I don't know that you actually, maybe remember Ms. Clark, we think our chair only, but I'm not sure you've ever met the other co-
So I wanna say Mr. Shaw's been around for a while.
Cause I remember that name.
I'm looking at the other names and, and, and I'm not as, as sure. But, uh, my name is Chris Johnson. I'm, um, a lawyer in Columbia. I practice a lot of women in labor law. Um, I've talked a little bit, but we represent a lot of counties, a lot of cities, um, so I'm gonna talk a little bit, uh, today about that.
Mr. Allen Atkins, Councilman.
Hey, good sir.
Good luck. Doctor Curtis Brenner.
Good to meet you.
And the Councilman John Kim. Thank you.
Sorry for the awkward silence. You know, we just plowed through the budget, so, you know, it's pretty somber in here right now.
Do you want me to advance your slides or? Do you want me to advance your slides or?
I'll probably do it.
You can go to everything he pulls out of that and give us one. So we can be, well, be, uh, functional in other places.
What do you want?
All your equipment to be able to be universally accepted wherever you go.
Oh, yeah. Good luck.
Right behind you, you can unplug mine, which is the top one there.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, there we go.
What's that little tray doing?
Um, it's just a protection. Keeps it from just getting, uh, just getting.
I may just wander around a bit and walk back to it. Are we ready or do we need to wait on end?
I think it's right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ready? Alright, so we wanted to talk a little bit this morning about, um, individual liability for official acts. And it seems like, um, these days that, that everybody's got a lawyer, um, and everybody wants to sue somebody. And, uh, this one's kinda hard to read, but it says, uh, Mr. Cummings will now discuss that gray area between legal act and illegal act. Um, and, and often, um, there's, there's clear examples of, of, of how to apply law of what's, what's definitely legal and what's definitely illegal. And then sometimes in the middle, there's a whole lot of, uh, much that you gotta work through. So, um, we wanna talk a little bit about that today and, and kinda how to, um, how to avoid getting, getting snared. So we'll talk about some situations, um, that can lead to liability in particularly in employment matters, because that's, um, that's what I deal in most. Um, and we will, um, talk about some strategies or best practices to, um, to avoid liability, individual liability, um, at the council level. But also to, um, to avoid, um, liability for the county. Something that you don't have a question, please, please ask it. It'll be much more interesting, um, that way than if I'm just standing here talking. So why this matter? I've been doing this twenty-two years, I guess, and, um, I have seen a, an uptick, uh, recently in, uh, I'd say in the last, uh, fifteen years. And the plaintiff's lawyers represent employee. When they bring a lawsuit or somebody's been fired or, or, uh, you know, been, they claim to been defamed or something like that. They're not only suing the county as the employer, but they're suing, um, the individuals who are involved in whatever decision making occurred to get the employee to where he or she is. So often that is supervisor, might be county administrator. But sometimes, and we've, we've had this happen, uh, when, when council gets involved in a personnel matter, when someone, you know, particularly when a council member takes a position one way or the other on, on something that's gotta happen to a particular individual. Then sometimes they get sued. We've had, we've had cases where there've been votes of council to, um, uh, to, to, you know, take some personnel action and it might be like a three-two vote. And so the three council members that voted for it get sued and the two that voted against it don't. So, uh, that's, you know, that's one of the things we've seen. Federal civil rights laws, um, provide for individual liability, particularly under section nineteen eighty-three, which is, um, we'll talk more about. But it's sort of the general, um, catch-all civil rights law for the federal government. The State Tort Claims Act. So as a, as a government and as a governmental body, you have, um, you have some protection under state law. The Tort Claims Act regulates, uh, what, uh, and when I say tort, that's like negligence, um, uh, you know, intentional harm, things like that. When you, uh, when you do something to somebody, we're not talking about contract, contract for a whole, a whole different animal. And typically wouldn't involve an individual council person. But, um, in the Tort Claims Act, if what you're doing is within the scope of your official duty, then you're, you're covered under the act's protections. And generally, the county is supposed to be substituted for you in any litigation. But that, that within the scope of official duty is important, because if what you're doing is outside the scope of official duty, then, um, you know, you're gonna run in potentially into some trouble. So easy example, um, and we'll talk more about it as we get into this, but an easy example would be you're driving home from Walmart on Saturday and you cause a car wreck. Well, that, that don't have anything to do with your, you know, being a council person. So there's no Tort Claims Act coverage for that. You know, but if you take a vote on a matter, uh, and clearly voting on, on things is, is part of what y'all are supposed to do. And it's on a matter that's clearly within your authority, then, then you're protected, um, as an individual. So those are, now, those are at far end of the spectrum and we'll wind up talking a little bit about stuff that's closer to the middle. And then insurance, y'all have coverage, I think, through the Insurance Reserve Fund, um, which is a state, uh, part of the state agency that provides, um, liability coverage for, uh, not only for the state, but for the state's political subdivisions when they choose to, to join it. And, uh, one of the limits, obviously, on, on a policy like that is, um, where, you know, was the person, the defendant acting inside or within his scope of authority or outside of it. So we wanna keep that in mind because if no coverage, if what you were doing is outside the scope of duty. And then the last thing to remember, and probably the simplest is, if you didn't have anything to do with it, um, how can you be sued for it? So, um, now we know that, that, um, you know, these days it seems like anybody can sue anybody else over anything. But if you didn't actually touch the situation, if you didn't have anything to do with it, then you're not gonna be much likely one of the people whose name is next to that word defendant. So some examples of, um, and I apologize if it's sort of small, but some examples of, uh, cases where, uh, we've seen some of these concepts happen. Anthony versus South Carolina Department of Corrections. Half million dollar verdict against two South Carolina Department of Corrections officials. Now, um, obviously Corrections is not governed by a council, uh, so it's not directly applicable in that sense. But what is important is the, the folks who were sued individually were, were high-ranking individuals who were not in the chain of command of, um, the folks that worked at the jail. One particular employee who worked at the jail who they had it out for. And so they, uh, they conducted a, essentially a contraband raid and an investigation, um, at a particular, uh, institution, uh, jail. And when they found some stuff, uh, they pinned blame on this one individual. And he brought suit saying that, look, you know, that these two employees who have no business conducting investigations or, or, you know, raids on the jail have conspired to fire me. And the court let it go through the trial and, and it came out with a half million dollar verdict. So, um, if you wanted to, to take that and think, alright, well, how, how would you apply that in the council context? Well, we see this all the time with county councils is, you know, constituent calls you up and says, you know, that he or she doesn't like working with a particular employee, um, because it's slowing things down. Or they, they're not, you know, they're not doing their job right. They're making my life difficult. They're not issuing permits, whatever. And so you go start looking into it. You go down there and you start talking to the employees and finding out how things are going on and, and, and what's going on. And you figure out that there's one particular employee who's kind of a, kinda gobbling up the works and something needs to be done with him. And so you push for something to be done. And, uh, either, either, you know, whether it's going to the administrator and saying, you gotta get rid of this guy. Or whether it's, um, talking to the employee a lot and saying, you know, you need to do this or you need to do that. Put the bug in his supervisor's ear. This guy's gotta go. So where this, where this leads and then what we've seen is to, again, to conspiracy claims against, um, against the council members. Because council's authority, we'll get into this later, is, is generally governance, uh, but doesn't extend to personnel issues. So, um, you know, again, you got action that would be outside the force and scope of official duty. And then you open yourself up to these conspiracy claims and we, we get them all the time. In state court, they're hard to get rid of. Uh, if they're brought with federal claims, we, we may have to. Flatto versus Harrison, this was a favorite of mine because it was, um, the first case that I litigated as a young lawyer. The board or the commissioners of the South Carolina, uh, Commission for Blind decided that they wanted to, um, conduct an investigation. And I can't remember anymore what it was into. Uh, I think it had to do with spending money. But into how certain employees were doing their jobs. And so they had their security folks go and gather up the employees, sit them down in the, outside the commission meeting room and bring them in one by one. And they, you know, they had them stand there and ask some questions and then, um, wouldn't let them leave. Apparently it was an all-day affair. Called them when they were done, they had to go back and sit in the, in the lobby and wait. So the employees, I think there were, I say there were two of them, um, who sued. They didn't even bother suing the, the commission. They didn't sue the state at all. They sued the individual commissioners. My recollection is they sued every one of them. And, um, they said, you know, you don't have the authority to detain me, to hold me, to tell me I can't go. They brought claims like, um, uh, it was like false imprisonment and, uh, and bizarre claims like that. Defamation is almost always in there, conspiracy. We were able to get dismissed, but not before the thing going all the way to the state Supreme Court. And importantly, what got it dismissed was the technicality. They waited too long to bring me a lawsuit. If, if they had done it earlier, um, because they thought they had a three-year statute, but, but when you convince the court, it was a two-year statute of limitations. If they brought it earlier, then, you know, we'd have to try that case and, um, you know, they might not like what these folks were doing. So. Brown versus Berkeley County, that's a little closer to home. I don't know if y'all remember that one. The court of court sued the county council over, um, an audit that the, um, council was, was pushing, um, for the, for the, um, court of court. And, um, broad defamation and outrage claims, you know, conflict of emotional distress. The takeaway from that is not necessarily, um, that, and I don't know a lot about how Berkeley County went about doing it. But the takeaway from this one is that there's no absolute immunity for, for council members, even when they're undertaking their, their role as council. I mean, you, you could certainly see a situation where, you know, as, as, uh, as the county council, you know, you may need to investigate some particular, you know, something that's going on within the county. But the key, the key takeaway is even when you do that, and we think of legislative immunity. So the members of the state legislature, when the legislature's in session and they're doing what, whatever they do as legislators, they are absolutely immune from being sued. Judges are absolutely immune from being sued when they act in their judicial capacity. Well, what they said for the members of county council was that you got to plead and prove some kind of qualified privilege or qualified immunity. That means the burden's gonna be on you to show that everything you did was above board, was, was within your authority, um, and proper. And that's obviously a little bit of a tougher standard than just to, you know, get out of jail free card. So. And then lastly, um, I wanted to talk about Sanders versus Prince. This was actually a, a sort of a, a fight within council. There was, there was, uh, two, two members of council, I think it was two, uh, who opposed the, uh, the, the chair. And well, it was on a school board, the, the school board chair, I keep calling it council, the school board. Opposed the quote-unquote administration of the, the, the school board chair and, and a couple of other members of council. And it was, you know, you would think that that's basically a political fight. I mean, there's always going to be, you know, council members, board members, politicians who disagree on matters. That's, you know, to some degree why they got elected. But what this council person did or, or board member was publicly, um, accused the others of malfeasance, of fraud, mismanaging funds, uh, illegal bid solicitations, kickbacks, I mean, you know, serious stuff. And so the board members who were accused of this filed a lawsuit and said, that's defamation. I, we're not doing any of that stuff. And, and you can't prove it. And, um, they proved that there was, you know, that not only, um, did, did, did they say these things, but they said it with quote-unquote, accia and malice, which generally means that they know that it's false or in reckless disregard for the truth and got a two million dollar verdict against the, the individual board members. So. Not an area that's totally risk-free, obviously. So how do we translate that into, into what we do as a council? We wanna look at, at four different areas that, that tend to be minefields. We wanna look at constitutional rights. We wanna look at, um, discussing personnel and, and generally private matters, um, publicly or in some kind of setting where there's not a privilege. We wanna look at individual action versus corporate action, action as a group. And then, um, we wanna look at the role of council as a governing body versus the role of the administration as a, as an executing, um, organ of the body. So when we're talking about constitutional rights, um, again, I mentioned section nineteen eighty-three. This is an old, old statute. It actually goes back to the eighteen sixties and was enacted, uh, by Congress to help guarantee the rights of formerly enslaved individuals. rights of formerly enslaved individuals after the Civil War, where the states, particularly in the South, obviously, were not enforcing their rights. And so the general gist of it is, you know, any person who, standing behind the, sort of the shield of his office, his or her office, causes another citizen of the United States to be deprived of a constitutional right or rights secured by federal law is liable to that party. So it's broad language. It covers a lot of stuff. Basically, what that translates into as far as employees go is, public employees, the courts have said, don't leave their constitutional rights at the door when they come to work. Now, they obviously don't have quite as many rights to do certain things as the general citizenry would, because as an employer, county still has to be able to control the workforce. But they still retain most of their rights. And then, public officials are not shielded from individual liability if case law. So when the courts have seen cases that are similar, they've said, hey, that's illegal. Then that puts you as a council on notice that if, you know, if you act in a certain way, that that would be illegal. But there was a case that came out not terribly long ago where it was an officer who, and these can be applied in lots of different situations, the sheriff's office probably sees them a lot with, you know, when folks that they've detained are claiming that their rights have been violated. But this was either in a jail or in a police department, but they had basically, they had abused somebody in their custody in a pretty horrific manner. And the defense that they put up was, well, there's not been any case that says that we couldn't do this particular thing under these particular circumstances. And the court said, well, I understand that, but common sense says that you just can't beat somebody like that. And so that's kinda why I've put that common sense in there. You know, if it smells like it's gonna be illegal, then it probably is, and you're probably not gonna be shielded from liability for doing it. So the rights that we look at that are protected, we've got equal protection, which is a fairly simplistic idea that we treat similarly situated folks similarly. We've got discrimination. So under section 1983, that includes race and sex. There are other laws that cover more of the waterfront than that, but 1983 only covers those two. We have due process rights, and when we think about due process, a lot of times we think about, like, the state grievance system, where you can't, you can be fired, but you're subject to being put back into your job if the grievance committee thinks that the firing was arbitrary or irrational or something like that. That's not really what this is. By and large, county employees are employed at will, so they don't have that right. But they do have a right to their good name. So if you think of the circumstances under which somebody could bring a defamation suit against you, they could also usually bring a due process claim if their reputation was somehow injured in the course of firing. And then privacy. Law enforcement folks are used to dealing with Fourth Amendment issues all the time. On the civil side of government administration, we probably don't think about it a lot because we're not out arresting people and conducting searches, but we are a government, and there are some times when the Fourth Amendment comes into play. And then free speech, you know, the First Amendment. If we literally restrict employees' speech or restrict it in the wrong ways, then we can be liable for that. So we wanna go through each one of these and get a little bit of, you know, some takeaways from each one. The big takeaway with equal protection and discrimination is to be consistent. You know, one of the things you do as a council is you develop or approve policies for the general governance of the county. So we wanna be sure that we've got strong policies, that the administration has come up with strong procedures that backs that up. When we have involvement by a council or council members that's outside of the normal decision-making process, so normally, within most counties, personnel decisions are typically gonna start, you know, somewhere around supervisor, department head level, and then move up from there. Whether they're hiring or firing or discipline, they're usually gonna start somewhere lower and then move up for approval. Again, remember that, and we'll get to it, but the way the legislature's set up, the council administrator form of government council doesn't have any authority over personnel matters generally, or specific personnel matters. They can have, obviously, the power and authority to set policies. So when we get council involvement, it's almost always gonna be outside that normal decision-making process, and that can be evidence of intent to discriminate against a particular person or to deny individual protection. And I've got constituents up there. The, I don't know how it is for y'all, but I know from working with other counties, one of the things that council members are subject to as politicians is there are constantly people who are, you know, cozying up to them and trying to, you know, ingratiate themselves with you so that they can find out what's going on, what's the backstory, what's the scoop, what's getting ready to happen, whether it's just because they just have to know and they like to stir the pot, or whether it's because they wanna have some advantage. And constituents are not, obviously, just the general citizenry, but, you know, employees who live within the county vote, too. And so they will often find ways to, you know, whether it's because they knew one of you from years before and have known y'all forever, or whether it's because, you know, again, they just sought to sort of ingratiate themselves with you, they will find ways to try and get, you know, in your ear and get information from you, things like that. And so we wanna be careful that one of the things we're not doing is having council members put their thumb on this game. So, you know, whether it's, you think you know some guy who's perfect for a job opening, or that guy thinks he's perfect for the job opening, and he comes to one of y'all and says, I hear the county's got this thing, you know, can you help me out? We wanna stay away from doing that sort of thing. Harassment, that's a claim that gets brought against council members sometimes, particularly when, you know, I referenced earlier a situation where you might have a council member who is concerned with a particular operation at the county and decides he's gonna go or she's gonna go check it out and, you know, see what's going on down there. And, you know, this is, this is in a situation where these folks, I mean, if I walked into one of these places, you know, whoever was in charge would say, who are you? Darn, we got work to do. But obviously, they're not gonna feel like they can do that with a council member. And so you've got this sort of power disparity, and we get complaints from employees all the time at all the counties that I represent, that they feel like they're being harassed or intimidated into, whether it's providing information or saying things that they don't feel comfortable saying, or doing things that they don't feel comfortable doing. And where you get, you know, a possible disparity in race or sex, and that's one of the things that if they go see a lawyer, that they're gonna look for. And again, under 1983, you have individual liability for it. If it's a, you know, you can also have county liability. Do you have a question that's possible there?
Yes, sir.
Harassment. Let me give you a scenario and share with you, how does it fit in there, if at all? You're members of this council, and Mr. Fulgham is directly responsible to us, and the employees are responsible to him, not to us.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we have, if we went to one of the employees without, if we went to the employee with a concern, could the employee charge us with harassment?
Yeah, I think it would depend on how it happened and, you know, whether it's, you know, sort of a chance meeting of, hey, I heard, but in general, that's not the way you wanna do it for a couple of reasons. Number one is, remember that council, and we're talking about this, but council's gotta act as a body. As individual council members, I mean, y'all are kinda like everybody else. It's only when you come together as a body and you vote to take action, or don't take action, whatever, that what you do is official and what you've done is within the force and scope. As an individual council member, you don't have any authority to go and investigate anything or check on anything. So if in the course of questioning the employee, the employee felt like he or she was harassed, then, yeah, I mean, they could say, I was being harassed. Now, is that gonna be the kind of harassment that lanes you in jail? No, probably not. But you would be surprised these days over how little, in terms of quote-unquote harassment, employees are taking to their lawyers and their lawyers are taking to court, just trying to get some money. So, I mean, that's not the way I would wanna do that. I, you know, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but I think the better way to handle something like that is to take the concern to the administrator and say, I have heard that there is this issue, and ask the administrator to look into it and, you know, report back. If it's something that is gonna require more than that, there's some ways to do that. We'll talk about those later. But no, that's not something that you wanna do. Retaliation is an issue. I think we all know what retaliation is. You know, we don't wanna do it. But in general, like we were just saying, it's best to stay uninvolved in these personnel matters. We let the administration earn its keep. You know, as a county, y'all pay a lot of money to the employees, and you should expect them to do their job. And as you said, the administrator reports to you.
Right.
So if there's something within the county that needs to function differently or function better, then those are expectations that you need to set with the administrator and then expect the administrator to handle them. And the last point I wanna make on that is, when we talk about the 1983 and we talked about, you know, whether you've got qualified immunity, qualified privilege to do what you did, remember that when council gets involved as a body, arguably, there's an argument to be made that that's the official custom or policy of the county, because that's what y'all do, is set policy. And that can cause liability issues for the county beyond just individuals being sued over acts that allegedly violate constitutional rights. So, you know, one of the ways that we get some of these 1983 claims, and there's a claim that perhaps, you know, Andy violated somebody's rights, or some supervisor violated somebody's rights, and they wanna sue Andy and the supervisor, but they also wanna bring the county. Well, normally, they can't, because Andy doesn't set official policy for the county. So we normally have that defense, but if council is so involved in these individual personnel matters, that they essentially are setting official policy, then the county's gonna get wrapped into that, too. And it just, you know, it takes away one of the defenses that we have when we're fighting these claims. Talk a little bit about privacy rights. Again, I mentioned the Fourth Amendment prohibits unreasonable search and seizure. I don't know that there's too many cases where a council's gonna get involved in this or an individual council person is, but again, if you're out, you know, investigating things on your own, and, you know, no matter what it is, I mean, somebody comes to you and says, I think employees are stealing and putting stuff in their bags and walking out of this particular department, or they've got, you know, they're using drugs down there or whatever, if you go down there and you kinda conduct your own sort of individual investigation, and you start asking these employees, well, hey, well, can I see what's in your bag? And the employee says, well, I don't feel like I can see. No, this is a council person that came and asked me, and so I don't wanna die. And so you start rifling through their bag, well, I mean, that may well be an unlawful or unreasonable search, because, you know, just hearing the rumors probably not probably cause to go down there and pick on somebody and search through their bag. We run into it most with drug testing, and so as a policymaking body, the thing I want you to know is that some employees in public service can be randomly drug tested, but not all of them. Most county officials are fairly well aware of this, and it isn't a huge deal, but it's probably the biggest takeaway for y'all as a group. The safety-sensitive folks can be drug tested, law enforcement, obviously, y'all have fire and EMS, they can be randomly drug tested. But for most folks, you have to have particularized suspicion to do it. And then you've got CDL drivers, it's a federal program that totally regulates the all-faceted Invasion of privacy claims. When we talk about invasion of privacy or beyond the basic definition, what we're talking about is whether an employee has an expectation of privacy and particular information that's at hand. And whether it's reasonable or not, most employees think that what's in their personnel files is off limits, that it's not public information. The courts have not quite agreed with that. They've said some stuff is and some stuff isn't, and it's really gonna be somewhat circumstantial. But the key is, when you're talking about, you know, a particular personnel matter, not sort of a broad policy issue about, you know, how employees need to act generally or treat other people or handle a certain matter, but you're talking about a particular issue, is to do it either in private, so whether that's, you know, an executive session to discuss personnel matter, or in circumstances that are clearly privileged. So if something the employee did caused, you know, quite a problem and it became an, you know, an issue the council needed to take up, then you would wanna discuss it cautiously within official, you know, as an official gathering of council. But what you would wanna do is go to a press conference and say, I believe this is terrible. You know, I'm not for employees doing this kinda thing, and we're gonna root this out, and we don't wanna do that. So, and, you know, World War II thing, it's just, it's best to, best to keep that stuff privately when we can. So you say, but what about my freedom of speech? I got freedom of speech, right? And you do, but let's talk about employees' freedom of speech a little bit, because that's where we can get ourselves in trouble. In general, the government, which is y'all, county government, this is all levels of government, cannot restrict speech or expression on a matter that is of public concern and by a private citizen. And so immediately, what you say is, well, what is a matter of public concern? And that's a good question. And the courts have said, well, that's a good question. We don't know how to draw a line. We're just gonna tell you, you know, in each individual case that comes before us, whether this was a matter of public concern. So it can be a little bit difficult to zero in on. You know, and this gets awkward. So I had a case that went to the court of appeals twice and ultimately a Supreme Court before they rejected it, where you had a corrections officer who was talking about an incustody death. Well, there's no question that an incustody death is a matter of public concern, but the question was, was the way that he spoke about it somehow contributing to the somehow contributing to the public debate? And so when you start parsing things like that, you quickly realize that this concept of what is a matter of public concern is hard to figure out in advance. And there's some argument to be made that just about everything y'all do as a council is a matter of public concern because you're public officials. You spend public money. You make rules that apply to the citizens of the county. And then the other big sticky part is when is it that someone is acting, speaking as a citizen versus an employee? Again, this is, you know, this is sort of hard to nail down when you've got an employee of the county. And particularly what the courts look at is, well, is this a policymaking employee? Is this a high level employee? With a low level employee? They're going to give low level employees a fair amount of leeway. The higher up they are, they'll get less leeway. So, you know, if Andy was out saying things that y'all not be saying, that he might not get much leeway from y'all or from the courts. But if we're talking about low level employees who get angry and say, "Why did the county speak this terribly? And this is, you know, this is a terrible place to work" and all those things, then, you know, they might be speaking as a citizen versus an employee depending on what sort of topics they're touching on. Particularly if they're touching on things that are, that we know have some public concern component, like they claim their discrimination within their department. Where they claim that the law being violated. The way to avoid trouble, obviously, don't punish a harassed, low level employees for speaking their mind. And you've just got to, you know, be very circumspect about any time you're looking to impose some sort of discipline on somebody for something they say as you go up the chain of command. We don't want to create, this is particularly important for y'all as a policymaking body, don't create policies to prohibit employees from speaking in general. Now, there will be times that confidentiality has to be observed. You know, you've got situations with economic development. You know, we don't want our human resources director out, you know, telling everybody what's going on with personnel throughout the county. I mean, there are some things that we can reasonably expect. But, you know, for example, and I suspect it's good about saying, but you couldn't pass a policy that says, "Well, employees can't publicly criticize county council or any member of county council on their Facebook page." If so, then that's going to be, you know, disciplinary offense. That would be prohibited. So those are the kind of things that we want to be careful about. Also be aware that there is a state criminal law that makes it illegal to terminate employees because they have exercised their political rights or they have spoken, you know, political opinions. It has not been well litigated, so it's not entirely clear what the bounds of this thing are. But, and I don't know that anybody's been prosecuted under it. What generally happens is a civil suit is brought for wrongful discharge and violation of public policy with this being the public policy that we violated. We've seen a few of those cases. But again, they're not terribly well litigated, so we don't know what the outer bounds of it is or are. So we want to be careful with that.
Chris?
Yeah?
If I could, do you have slides on social media and how that ties into this stuff? Or is this a unique spot to talk about?
Well, so I have slides, I have social media, I have a whole social media presentation that I do for managers and one that I put together for employees. I've never done one to politicians.
Well, I was thinking about that. In the last couple of years, there have been initial growth of Facebook postings, social media postings by employees about employment related matters and those types of things and the problems that can be created by responding to those.
Oh, well, now, that's true. We don't want to get drawn into the debate on Facebook for all kinds of reasons. And the first one, and is probably the most obvious, I mean, you just don't want to air your dirty laundry in public. It's just kind of a matter of the forum. That's not what we want to talk about in these things. And somebody, some of these folks may have legitimate rights, but some people just like to put stuff out there. And somebody told me one time, you know, you shouldn't, trying to remember how this saying goes, "You shouldn't wrestle with pigs because you both get dirty and the pig likes it." That's kind of what debating on Facebook and Twitter and all that is like. Because people that put that stuff out there, they're mad or they're hot about something or they just want to get 1,500 likes. And I think the, and really what we've, you know, we've seen more of is where something gets posted and it causes concern for a council member or board member and they bring it to the chief executive and they say, "You know, we've got employees out here that are just trashy to county. Can we do anything about this?" And it's usually at that point that my family reads and, you know, the question is, "What can we, you know, can we haul this employee in and tell him to stop?" And sometimes we can caution them and sometimes we can't. So just know that if the answer comes back, the lawyer said, "This is trouble," that the risk is getting sued under the First Amendment and/or, you know, the statute that you're implementing on what the issue is. And sometimes we, you know, as a public body, we're expected to take some level of criticism. You know, not some people go too far and sometimes, you know, it feels a little like you want to push back, but nothing good ever comes from that. That's a good point and it's not one that I back a lot of. I expect that my county attorney sees it all the time. Chris, we may need your services down the road on that social media thing for some training, I think, for our staff.
It's a problematic area. I mean, that's why social media is such a friend.
That's right.
And it needs a written record that never goes away and it will always be misinterpreted.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yeah, if you're explaining, you lose, I mean, that's, you know, it's a politician telling that. Yeah, no, happy to do that. So we talk about personnel issues. We touched on this a little bit earlier, but open session versus closed session. In general, we want to have an open session, general discussions about county line or department line policies. You know, sort of general concepts of, you know, we need to improve service delivery in this department or that or in the way that we do some particular thing. Compensation systems are something that we would, you know, broadly, as far as classification compensation, things like that, that we would discuss in an open session. In closed session, that's where we want to handle our conversations about specific individuals. So if there is something that has gone on that, you know, the council needs to be briefed on, that's where, you know, we want to hold that briefing. So if we've had an investigation of misconduct and we're getting a report back to council on it, that's the place where we want to have that report. Again, accusations or issues that concern specific individuals or how a policy that has been adopted by a county applies to a specific individual. You know, if there's some question of their, you know, being unfair or this is being a problem, then that's something that should be discussed.
What happens when you have a compensation, not compensation, what you're talking about is specific individual, not individual, but a area. And it's only one person in that area. Do you, how do you handle that? That is supposed to be open session, but you can't have an open session because you're actually talking about somebody.
Well, if, I think if we're talking about adopting a compensation system broadly, then I don't have, you know, the fact that as part of it, there may be a department of one, I don't know that that's going to be a problem. I think where you get into, you know, this particular, you know, we're spending too much on this, you know, this particular service or this particular department and it's clear that there's only that one person, then, and we're going to, we're naturally going to get into perhaps the level of services being provided by that one person or some issues that we've had with that person and that's when we want to pull that into the load session. If we're just talking about like a market study, like somebody has looked and said that, you know, directors of whatever, you know, are generally paid in the area from this level to that level and we're talking about, you know, the size of the employer and the size of the county and where those slot in that market and where our person would slot, that's probably not a big deal. And particularly if their pay is over $50,000 a year, the level of compensation is in the public domain already. That would be okay. It's a good question. All right, so why do we want to pay attention to how we do this? We obviously want to avoid defamation claims, which is generally the claim that you've made a false statement about me and it's harmed my reputation. Remember, everything that you say in an open session is a matter of record. Y'all record your, it's probably broadcasted these days too. So, yeah, I mean, it's definitely out there.
There's no going back.
That's right, yeah, you can't unring the bell. Truth is a defense to defamation, but, you know, the burden's on you to prove it. And it can be tough to prove that something is true. And there may be a privilege that applies, particularly in the context of where you make the statement. But again, you've got to make the argument and put the facts together for the court that proves privilege applies and wouldn't it just be better off not to get sued in the first place? Then we talk about privacy and expectation of privacy. Most folks are going to expect that personnel matters that involve them or not in the air publicly. I think most jurors probably would feel that way too, particularly if they work for somebody else. Legal privilege. So if you have received advice from council and you talk in open session about the advice you received from council, then you have probably waived that privilege. And may open up, if there's litigation, you may open up, again, to questions about, "All right, well, what all did you ask your lawyer and what did he tell you?" We want to keep those sort of discussions in executive session. And, you know, we talked about the forum earlier. I mean, we really don't want to air our dirty laundry in front of everybody. You know, we don't want employees arguing about personnel matters with council. You know, we'd like to maintain some level of stability with that. So, you know, again, keep those discussions that deal with particular employees in executive session, which boy allows us to do. We're allowed to discuss personnel matters in the executive session. We can receive legal advice in a closed session as well. There's a bunch of other things we can do. The thing that we can't do, and I'm sure y'all know this, is you can't vote on a course of action in executive session. And you also have to limit your executive session to whatever you said you were going to talk about. You can't let it become a broad sort of discussion of all the things that you want to say, but you haven't been able to lately. When you return to open session and vote, depending on how sensitive the matter is and what's going on. So for example, if we're going to propose a settlement, but we don't have the terms worked out yet and we know kind of a range that we're willing to pay for a settlement, but we don't want to take an open vote on how much we're going to pay because then we've just told the other side, "All right, well, here's where you are." Then you can return to open session and vote to accept the advice of whoever was advising you, whether it's the administrator or your lawyer. You can return to open session and vote if there needs to be a vote to take personnel action because that's not going to happen often because y'all don't really do that. So when it involves the administrator. Often, there's no vote needed. It's for briefing them so that you're aware of what's going on in the county. You can obviously, you know, with the employees, you can, you know, council members can express their concerns in an executive session over a particular issue. And, you know, you're not surprised by reading it in the newspaper if that happened to be briefed on. So. You know, we talk about going it alone. So the issue is, you know, the county council as a body versus individual members of council. The takeaway is the council must act as a body. Individual members don't have any authority to act, so they also don't have protection from consequences of those acts.
Question.
Yes, sir.
Could you simply expand on that a bit more in terms of acting alone outside of the body of the council?
Right.
And not having any protection? Could you just elaborate on that a bit more?
Yeah, sure. Well, we talked, so we talked earlier, like to your earlier question about, you know, you've got a matter that concerns you with a particular department and going down there and you decide, "I'm going to go and I'm going to look into that and I'm going to investigate it and see, you know, if there's..." You know, because I think something dirty down there, something stinks. You know, if you step on toes while you're doing that, if, you know, if you engage in conduct that might violate somebody's rights, whether you mean to or not, then you could be individually liable for that. You could be sued individually as opposed to the council being sued, not council, but county, or being sued in your official capacity, which is akin to suing the county.
So in that instance, I would not be covered by?
That's right.
Okay.
You wouldn't?
I'm on my own.
You're on your own? You would lose probably some of the protection to the Court Claims Act and you'll lose insurance coverage depending on what it is that happened. You're on your own.
Chris, to that point, it's not just losing the insurance coverage, you lose the IRF attorney that helped you out.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, they won't provide a defense if it's a claim that they don't cover. You may have to hire your own counsel.
What happens if you go down and guess, you say an investigation, yet on our ordinances, we have, you know, a council to go down and question. Ask the question.
Ordinances.
In our ordinance.
In your ordinance?
We have, it says that a councilant can go down for information.
Mr. Kemp, I think you may be, you may be thinking about the state statute that defines the role. I think it says that council has the ability to conduct investigations. It does. And I'll get to that. I will get to that. I want to, I want to get through this and then talk a little bit about that. So we talked about Court Claims Act. The things that are carved out of the Court Claims Act, so where the liability goes back to the individual as opposed to being county. Obviously, if it's outside the scope of judicial duties, where the harm is intentional. So if someone complained it was battery or retaliation, where there's actual malice in defamation or violation of federal law because, I mean, we can't limit, only the feds can limit our liability from federal law. The State Court Claims Act applies in, you know, actions that are brought from the state court. This actual malice to defamation, what I'm resorting to there is sort of the constitutional actual malice where, I mean, where you would say something that you know is not true or with complete reckless disregard for the truth. That's not going to have coverage under the Court Claim Act. We talked about insurance and, you know, to David's point, not only do you lose the liability coverage, but they won't even defend it if it's a claim of intentional act or something that would clearly exceed the official duty. So here's where we get into these gray areas. Do y'all use committees?
No.
No, thank goodness. No, no committees. All right, skip that. Good. Chance meetings is the next biggest thing where I have had problems with councils and boards. and boards, um, and it used to be the chance meeting at, at a local diner or something, or, you know, out and about, but now the chance meetings are all emails. And so, if there's one, two, three, four, five of you, a forum is what, three?
Yes.
Yeah, so if three of you are emailing each other about county business, then you have a chance to meet. Um, and I had, I had a situation with a state agency that shall go unnamed, um, recently, you may have read about it, where, um, three of the, it was more than three, but it was a forum of their board, we're discussing by email, the, um, the, the chief executive, and they employ, it was a similar setup, where they employ the, the chief executive, and then the chief executive hires personnel. And they determined that they needed to make, you know, to, to terminate this individual, and they made this determination by email, and then they held a meeting, and they did it, and they did it in open session, they did it right, but because they had discussed it.
Right.
And, you know, something that should've been, you know, noticed, there should've been a notice put up, you know, that there was gonna be a meeting, because they had done all this unofficially by email, the judge said, well, that, that firing is no good, and so you gotta pay that employee from the day that you fired him, months had passed by now, and they wound up paying with benefits well over a hundred thousand dollars in, in back pay, um, until you take a proper vote without any of this hanky panky occurring beforehand. So the key takeaway is, the discussions of official business have to, have to occur in official forums.
That's one thing we have to be very careful of, because this board, sometime, we, we're gonna have to make decisions that the administrator turns over to us. But now, you know, when I'm there with these people, you're every hate crime meeting, you're there hanging everybody down, you know of this situation before it gets to this council. You cannot make a true decision when you sit on this bench. So should you accuse yourself from situations right back, or better yet, just stay away from these kinds of meetings, because it's gonna come back to haunt you in the later days.
Yeah, are you talking about accusing yourself from a vote on something that you have personal knowledge of?
Right, once they've explained to you, they come and tell you, oh, Mr. Foulton has done this, I don't like him, he's done that, whatever, and then it comes to a grievance and whatever, and this council's gonna have to make the decision on it.
Why grievance is don't go to council, did it? I hope not, they shouldn't.
Well, the ones, uh, some of them, it doesn't go to council, but if they're not satisfied...
Yeah, they start bending your ear.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's where you tell them that, you know, look, we, we set policy, but, but we don't hire and fire folks, and it's, I wish there, you know, I wish there was somebody that can help you, but I can't. We are prohibited by law from, from doing that. I think, you know, it's not very satisfying, obviously, to the person receiving that, that information, and it may not be satisfying to y'all if you think that, that they got wrong, but, um, you know, the way, the way y'all deal with, um, with things like that is if there is a sense among council, or majority of council, that the administration isn't treating people fairly, then you go to the administrator and you say, look, this is, we see a pattern of this, um, we're concerned about how these things are being done, um, and, and we wanna know how you're gonna address our concerns, but you have to do that as a body. That's not something that...
Those are factors, you know, those, yeah?
Yeah, that's right.
Things, shit.
Yeah, that's right.
Chris, can I touch on something here? Um, it's always kinda been a pet peeve of mine, but, um, and just as a matter of practice, I don't do it, but when, when people go to meetings and say, I'm not here as the county administrator, I'm here as a resident of wherever you're from, you start to speak. As you mentioned earlier, you sort of bring your position with you, and there's a, there's a natural thought that you bring the position of the body you work for every time you go.
And that you have special knowledge because of your...
So I have always just personally decided, I, I step away from any of those issues. There are plenty of meetings I'd like to go to and tell people my peace of mind, but I don't do that, I've, I've given that up, because I've taken the public role.
Right.
What would be your advice to council on, on those kinds of things? This clerk can't speak at a loco, at a loco meeting without everybody knowing she's the chairman of the county.
Yeah. Um, are you the delegate to the, to the loco county? No, okay.
I'm just giving you an example.
The servant board.
It's just, it's just a touchy area, is there any, I mean, I know, maybe it's an ethical thing, or you have to make peace with it yourself, but is there any, any way that, uh, you know, Mr. Atkins going to a town regional meeting and saying, I'm not a county man, I'm, I'm speaking as a county resident, I don't like what you're doing, is there any way that you can get some legal attachment to some of that stuff?
I, you know, I don't know that there, I mean, obviously you have a right as a citizen to be heard, but, but you, you, you're never gonna be able to full, just as a practical matter, you can't fully divorce your...
That's right.
Your, your official position. Um, I am not an ethics expert, but, but you obviously can't use your, um, your official position in order to, to gain some personal advantage, and so you want to be really careful about that. Um, you know, and it certainly may be that if there are others who are, um, of like mind with you, perhaps they would, they would be ones, you know, perhaps it would be better for them to attend, you know, the, the town council meeting and speak out on whatever the issue is. Um, you know, obviously, with, with, um, you know, things that are purely political as far as your position on, on policies and stuff that come before council, I, I think you can speak on that, you can't speak to what council's gonna do, 'cause you, you know, you don't really know, but you can obviously talk about, um, what, what you have, you know, championed as a, as a, as a council person, um, but, but yeah, I mean, I, and I certainly think you wanna be careful to avoid, um, giving the impression that, that somehow a town, or a, a, um, you know, a special purpose district, or something like that, somehow the way that their, their board votes on something or handles something may impact, um, you know, your vote on, if it's where, where it involves you personally. Now, if it's purely a political issue, a policy issue, um, you know, you're, you're staunchly opposed to some particular, you know, policy, and they're getting ready to adopt it, then that's, that's, that's one thing. I mean, that's okay to, you know, to throw your weight around, where it's, where it's not is where the, you know, the, the issue involves you personally. Um, I think, I think that's, you know, I think that's where you could run into some, some issues, you know, ethically. Um, the, the chance meetings issue, the, the sort of, the thing that we have seen come out of that, uh, is conspiracy claims against the council members, or board members, or commission members who, um, who went and sort of engaged in the, the off the record discussions of official business. Um, the plan's attorneys have, have tried to, you know, in addition to bringing in actions under the FOIA to invalidate, um, personnel, um, decisions, they've also brought conspiracy suits, where they say, look, I mean, you, you acted outside your official capacity, um, and, and you were trying to injure this person, and so, um, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna bring a conspiracy claim against you. So we wanna avoid, it's civil conspiracy, we're not talking about criminal conspiracy, I'm talking about civil conspiracy, so they're, you know, trying to find another way to, um, to give the lawsuits some value. We wanna avoid those. So, you know, again, takeaway is just sort of summarizing, but act as one body. Now, the, the question from Councilman Kemp was, well, you know, what, what do we do, um, you know, when we, when we do hear that there's something, I mean, we have an oversight role, how can we oversee if we don't have any information? And so, um, we don't have committees, but, um, but you could certainly have a, you could either put together an ad hoc committee that you authorize to, to take certain actions, better yet, you could authorize, um, if appropriate, the administrator to look into an issue and to report back. If it's something that requires some outside assistance, whether it's a, an auditor, or an attorney, or some outside investigator, then you can, as a body, you can authorize, um, you know, the, the, the hiring of, you know, this outside person to come in and to do this report and to report back to you. Um, those things are all, um, are all permitted, and that's, that's the way you wanna handle your, your oversight. You don't wanna do it, um, on your own, out there asking questions. Now, if it's a question of, look, I really need to see what, what happens, how this department works, you know, I've heard about it, but I've never been down there, then that's one of those things where, um, you know, you, you wanna ask the administrator, hey, can I just, can, you know, can we go look? Um, you know, I wanna see how, um, you know, the public works department does X, Y, or Z. Um, or, you know, council could obviously, as a body, say, you know, we'd like, um, we would like council on some, so, to go down there and, and see this thing and, and report back to us, and then you go down there with it. Now, obviously, it's not gonna be a, hey, surprise, I'm here, and I, you know, I caught you, I mean, you, you're not gonna have that happen, but that's not really the way we wanna, we wanna go back and not take investigations anyway. Um, you don't have committees, so we don't have to worry about that, but remember, no business by email. Um, and it doesn't matter whether, I don't know if y'all, for email communications, when you have county email addresses, or personal ones, um, my recommendation is, any, anything, you know, when the notices go out, they go out to a county email, um, you know, the, I'm not gonna be here, and stuff like that, um, county email, don't use your personal email, because when the lawyer requests come in for, you know, for all the emails on this topic or that, you wanna be able to say, I don't use my personal email for any of that, and county can search my county email. You, you don't wanna be, you don't wanna have some lawyer digging through your personal emails. Um, but don't remember, no, no business by email, and it doesn't matter whether it's your personal email or your official email, because if your personal email's what you use to conduct business, then it, it becomes part of the public record, some of it does anyway, so, um, you wanna avoid that. This was, I think, the statute Councilman Kemp was talking about. Um, except for purposes of inquiries and investigations, the council shall deal with county officers and employees who are subject to the direction and supervision of the county administrator solely through the administrator. And neither council or its members shall give orders or instructions to any such officer nor employee. So that's, that's the language from the South Carolina Code, so, um, you know, the, the takeaway there is, don't, don't deal individually with employees. Now, that doesn't mean you can't say, hey, how are you, you have a good day, um, you know, if some employee comes and, and starts bending your ear, you're not just gonna run away, but, but, you know, what you're gonna do is, is say, well, that's something that the administration would be able to deal with, if you brought that up to your supervisor, and you brought that up to the county administrator. Um, if, if you feel the need at that point to go to the administrator and say, you know, look, um, someone's just came and told me that this is going on, I wanna, I wanna put that on your plate, so that, um, so that if it's handled, um, you can report back to the employee that, that, you know, let the administrator know, um, but you don't wanna get involved in the middle of it, and you certainly don't wanna give orders and instructions to employees under the administrator.
Chris, can I elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah.
I know it's always a topic of intrigue, um, it really all gets back to just basic communication and trust, you know, can you communicate, can you trust, can you work as a team? And we've had, uh, you know, years of distrust, and years of hypertrust, and all that kinda thing in between, but I can think of three different examples when, uh, the council, previous councils have had some concerns about things, and they were handled in, in three different ways. One of them, I, I remember was, they wanted this, they wanted some information about something they didn't think they were getting information about, and so the staff said, well, what if we do this, that, and the other, bring it to you, would that be acceptable? And that's what we did, and it was acceptable. Uh, another one I can think of was, um, the council was skeptical of some of the auditing, who wanted to look at a deeper dive into the financials, and, uh, again, we discussed it, and the council wanted to hire an independent firm to come in and, and look at its secondary of, of financial structure. And so, uh, we did that, we, we helped get the proposal, council reviewed it, approved it, and, and that was done. And the third one is, uh, the most salacious, and that's that, uh, we had a council member sort of accusing the staff that we, that we were too hard on employees, and that we were abusive to employees, and so, um, I'm glad that came to the council.
Right.
And we discussed it, uh, in an executive session, what, what we're gonna do about that, and, uh, the thought was, well, we, you know, we need somebody independent to see if this is true or not. And so, um, in our discussions, we ended up, um, hiring a law firm to, to do that, to interview some employees, and try to put a, a package together for the council's review about what they found in doing that. So, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll cut to the results, but, but they went through all the interviews and brought it all back, and there was no merit to it, so, uh, but those are some issues that you may run into, they're pretty typical, and you also have, um, you have some employees that have been here a long time, and they've seen some of this stuff, and, uh, unfortunately, sometimes they'll, they'll misuse elected officials to try to, to poke and prod, and it's something that, that benefits their agenda, or make sure the, the spotlight isn't on them, but it's on someone else. Don't look at me, look over here, here's the problem. And so, uh, I think some of that all just comes with experience and, uh, working together and just the building of, of level of trust.
Um, the Association of Counties, which I don't know if y'all remember them or not, I don't know if you're required to be, or how that works, but...
So we don't remember.
What's that?
We don't remember.
Yeah, so they put out a, um, a handbook for county government in South Carolina, and this is from the 2014 edition, which I think is the most recent, um, but it sets out sort of how they view, um, the, the role of council. Um, and I've underlined parts, um, we've talked about, obviously, adopting policies that address issue of concerns to counties, well, stakeholders. Um, and, and I thought this was, was, um, was sort of salient, you know, while council members may be clear about a policymaking role, they often find it harder to do in practice. Um, many councils struggle with confusion over what is policy, and what is administration, and precisely at this point, the councils often fail. Um, so one of the things that I kinda wanted to do was go over, um, some examples of what, what would you think of as government, and what would you think of as administration? Um, and I, I've tried to line them up, so that, you know, one connects to the other, they don't always, um, they don't always work that way, but when we talk about governance, we're talking about the what, what is our policy, what are our goals, what do we stand for as a county? Um, but what we leave to the administration is, is, is for the most part, the how. How are we gonna get there? How are we gonna execute the, um, the policies, uh, and put them into practice? Um, again, you know, flowing from that, obviously, council sets policy, but, but the procedures and the execution, and how that policy's gonna be undertaken, is what we're gonna leave, um, you know, to the administration. Uh, we talk about goals, we set goals as a, as a council, um, but the, the way we reach those goals, the execution on that is, is what we leave to the administration. Uh, again, our values, our plans, the execution of the plan we leave to the administration, we provide direction as a council, um, but we expect the administration to do the work to implement the direction that we give. And the, the example I thought was coolest, and I can't remember where I got this from, if it came from the handbook or someplace else, but the council sets the, the boundary, they set the banks of the river, and then the job of driving a boat and keeping it off the banks is the administration. Um, and so, this was a simple, simple... And so, this was a simple, simple example, but, you know, an example of policy, obviously, would be the county is committed to hiring, employing the best quality individuals, and providing equal opportunities for employment. And then, the administration's role would be to develop and implement policies and processes for hiring. Personnel policies are usually going to come to council for some sort of adoption by resolution. But this would include equal employment policies, policies for combating and avoiding discrimination or access, things like that, and all the things that are in the policy handbook. So, we talked about this early on, as far as liability issues with just governance versus administration concept. If you weren't involved, you can't be sued. So, if, you know, you didn't fire the person, you can't be sued. Now, there's 280 lawsuits versus one lawsuit. The concept there is, you've got one person who is responsible, or that you're responsible for hiring and firing, and that's the administrator. So, if you manage to mess that up, or he thinks you messed it up, well, you've got the clerk and some others, but for the most part...
Yeah.
You have a very small number. You know, so if there's a screw-up with that, wow, let's take the one lawsuit, but let's not take the 280, or 300, or 400, or however many employees you've got out in the county by getting, you know, a few down there with weeds on these personnel matters. And so, when we talk about, we were talking earlier about the tort claims act, and how it protects you if what you're doing is within the scope of your official duties. Well, so that sort of leads us to this. Well, if state law separates governance and administration, and you cross the line into administration, then is that really part of your official duties? I think there's going to be an argument that it may not be, and it may take you outside the scope of protection from the tort claims act, and it may take you outside the scope of protection from insurance of the IRF, and all the consequences that leads to it. So, keeping that as clean as possible is important. We talked about this oversight issue, not dealing directly with employees. I'm sure y'all use staff reports or administrator reports to get critical information to the council that they need to know about. And so, that's how they're obviously routinely going to get information. When you have special issues, like Andy was talking about, where you need some outside perspective, you want to deep dive into something, that's when it's appropriate to go and get, you know, somebody outside to help you to report back to you. But again, if you want to act as a body to do that, you don't want to go and conduct your own investigation, or have some group of you do it. And just as a, you know, when we're talking about personnel actions in general, I mean, obviously, the council is a political body, and the administration is not supposed to be. And so, if the council is involved in, gets involved in a personnel matter, in an administrative matter, then you politicized it, and you've, you know, you've, you've kind of got the emotion and the heat and everything else. So, you know, if all the legal, if all the legal reasons didn't convince you, then, you know, that's sort of a good, just a practical reason. You know, we don't want things like that to become political. So, what happens when things go off the rails? I think everybody probably remembers the Anderson County fiasco. I'm sure y'all heard about that, and it was multiple lawsuits. But we had a lawsuit by one council member versus the administrator over getting, you know, documents. He said, "I'm entitled to these documents." And the court said, "No, a council is a body, is entitled to documents, but individuals aren't." You know, the thing really turned into a mess. There was a $1.1 million severance paid to a former administrator. And a lot of this was sort of fighting between, you know, a majority outgoing council and a new majority coming in. Bremel County, I don't know if y'all remember Tony Trout. This goes back a ways, but this was the councilman who thought the administrator was misusing county property, and so he put spyware on his computer and managed to violate the wiretapping laws and doing it. And he got sentenced to jail. I don't know where, I don't know what he's doing now. Have you followed up on that? But, you know, that's, I have seen other instances where things similar to this have happened, whether it's, you know, cameras being installed that record audio, which is known of, you know, notify people. But that's not the kind of thing that obviously we want to do. If somebody's got to go to jail, we want to make sure it's not you. So, kind of wrapping up, you know, it's y'all's job to determine the vision, to set the policies, you know, again, set the boundaries, and allow the staff to act within those boundaries. Have the administrator deal with the staff and hold them accountable for doing that. I'm sure you guys do a performance review every year to curate Andy, and you can tell him how you feel about, you know, those things. When you get, you know, as is going to happen, you get an employee that comes to you, and they're telling you this story, I mean, that's when you go to the administrator and, you know, say, "This is what's been told to me." And I give that to you to figure out what's going on and let us know. Do your oversight and investigatory functions, as well as everything else you do, as one body, and get the administrator or outsiders to report back to you. And, you know, where y'all come in as far as correcting perceived wrongs within the county is both through the administrator. This is, we don't want to see things like this happening, to think this violates our policy, or by making a policy. "We're not going to do X, Y, or Z anymore. We're going to handle things in this manner." And again, I think Andy's point, particularly in personnel administrative, administration, it requires a somewhat collaborative approach, because there are some things that council's going to want to see from a policy standpoint, but it also has to be practical. It has to be something that can actually be done, and recognize the, you know, sort of the limits of the folks that we have in our various positions. Again, let's keep personnel matters in executive session. We don't need to worry about committees, and again, act as one body. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that we didn't get answered along the way.
Do you want to have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
One, very one. Going, like I come from Partyville here for the meeting. Is that part of my job?
Part of your official duties?
Right. Workers' compacts, right?
Yeah. Does workers' compa, do you apply to this kind of?
I don't know. I just want to...
Not real sure.
I want to go with...
I think in general, regardless of the context, it's once you get there that it's part of your official duty. Now, if you're, if council sends you somewhere to undertake some official duty, then while you're on the way to that somewhere, that may be, that may be part of your official duty. Generally, getting to and from a meeting place or a place of work is on you and not on the county.
That's one of the reasons why you're going to stipend. We get a stipend.
Stipend, yeah, that's right.
We get that.
Yeah.
That is to take care of you, any place you were sent in the county. Now, when you go out of town to Columbia, Middle East, Charleston, you turn an expense report, and we pay additionally to that.
Right. And I understood the question to be a little bit different. I understood the question to be, are you, for example, if you're driving from home to the meeting, are, you know, and you get in a wreck, it's a county law.
Yeah.
And I think the answer is, I think the answer is no.
And your personal insurance.
We've always, we've always said that for county employees, is to, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's the same for...
But if you get in a county vehicle, authorized to be in a county vehicle, and are going somewhere, you will be covered.
I understand that.
And just another question. Ken used, you mentioned several times that, you know, if you don't do anything, if we're not involved, we don't. So, if we set a policy, and the administrator couldn't follow the policy, we didn't do anything to make sure he did follow the policy, or is that...
Well, what you, so if you make a, you set a policy, and you find out the administrator's not following the policy, then you have to take that up with the administrator. And ultimately, remember, he works for you. And so, if he's not following policy, then, you know, that's, he's, some administrator, most administrators have contracts, and you've got remedies under the contract, but that's where you, that's where you handle that.
Wow, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
I knew you said something earlier about drug testing. You said that you can't randomly drug test everybody?
You cannot. In the private, in the public sector, in the private sector you can, but public employees cannot be randomly drug tested unless they fall into the safety-sensitive category.
Okay, but if they're driving a county vehicle, why can't you? Because, and they're loved, and they can be a hazard if they're driving a county vehicle, and they be impaired, or whatever. I didn't say do one every one or whatever, but I feel like, I think that county employee should be tested every other year, or whatever. I mean, I'm saying, say, 10 this year for the first six months. I feel like that the next six to eight months, the ones that wouldn't test should be tested to let them know that they're going to be tested, because if they get in an accident, just as an instance, they're working, they're running around some legitimate equipment.
Yeah.
And they're bad drunk, and they're there, and didn't see that person, because they a little buzzed or whatever, and hit that person with equipment and injured, that's going to be a lawsuit.
Right.
I mean, I'm just asking, I mean, you know, because it's good to know.
Yeah. So, first of all, I mean, you're asking opinion, I mean, I agree with you, but the courts don't.
Well, let's go back to, if they have a CDL, the special rules of...
That's true.
So, if they got a commercial driver's license, and that's a condition of their employment, there's a different rule than the general.
Right, but that's for the big trucks.
The second thing is, if you have a reasonable suspicion that there's drug activity involved, you can get, "I've seen them at a liquor store, or there's during hours," or something like that.
Or you're smelling on them.
Wait a minute, that's sort of...
But that's a different, he's talking about random testing.
Again, that's identifying aberrant behavior, and none of us are qualified to do that right now, okay?
Yeah.
So, you need to have some training for your people to be able to...
You need to have training for your staff, for sure.
And we are working on that right now. But just so you don't have the instance where, you know, so-and-so doesn't like so-and-so, "Hey, I think, I think just go get him tested." No, but I have a reason to do it.
But the why is, as far as, like, you know, county pickup trucks, or cars, or something like that, is if you think about it, remember we had that concept that county employees don't check their rights at the door when they walk into work? And we all drive cars, and we all could be dangerous if impaired, but that doesn't authorize law enforcement to just randomly pull us over and say, "I need to take a drug test" to make sure that we're okay. And so, the same concept applies within the county employment, with the exception of, obviously, the folks that are safety-sensitive, you know, police, fire, EMS, and then CDL drivers are required to be randomly tested in their own sort of, own little pool. And fortunately, it's not always the case, but most of the folks, or a lot of folks that operate that heavy equipment, they've got CDLs because they've got to be able to tow that heavy equipment to the site. There are some cases where heavy equipment operators are not CDL drivers, and, you know, we can have a discussion about whether we think we could safely put them in a randomized pool, we might be able to. You know, water treatment operators, they can be randomly drug tested. It's got to do with, you know, with safety and, you know, beyond sort of the normal risks that we all take when we go out in the public.
Well, we can, we can have drug testing for employment.
You can have drug testing, you just can't have randomized drug testing.
Pre-employment is allowed.
Pre-employment is probably allowed. Most likely allowed.
Just so you know, we do pre-employment.
Yeah, I understand.
And we also do departmentals. If someone is in an accident, regardless of whether they have CDL or not, they're tested. We're working on the training so that we have a better understanding of what behavior would constitute triggers to have someone tested for staff. And then, where's the final one I was going? Oh, the random drug testing, we do. And we have an agency that picks those individuals randomly, so we don't even have our fingerprints on picking who goes, or when, or what department. They do that for us, so...
Are we part of a bigger pool?
A bigger pool with who?
Well, when I was working, we would, I was in leasing, driver leasing, and what we did was, we, oh, I know what you're talking about. We had, we had, like, sometimes three drivers, so this random testing...
Came around all the time.
Came around all the time, and so it came out every time, one person.
No, I don't hear any complaints about that.
I understand that, but what happens is, if you, I think you can join a pool, I don't know, you can join a bigger pool. So, your random testing is not, you can say, "Okay, with five people," or whatever you do for random testing.
Okay.
You have four drivers. Let's say you have four CDL drivers here.
Yes, sir, right.
Well, if you join another pool...
They're not always people.
They're not always there, and it protects you, it protects us, meaning, we had the guy sue us because we kept on...
Kept getting bit.
But random is random, right?
Right.
You know? So, we were stuck in between, and we finally decided, "We're going to join this pool."
Made a little larger.
Made a little larger, and then we didn't, we weren't as, we complied, but we didn't...
I imagine we have a fair number of CDL drivers.
Yeah, that's interesting. I'll have to see how we do that, but I know that the agency, I think we do it with, does set multiple agencies, so we haven't seen that happen, but I'd like to, I'll ask Ms. Hol about that, see how that's going. And incidentally, Ms. Hol is going to send training this month, as I said, to try to start that process of training departments.
As a whole, I think that we are doing good. We just need to be more cautious about some of the things that we do. Now, my motto, and they will tell you, "I'm not going to do Andy's job, because I am not getting paid to do Andy's job."
That's right.
And what we have to do as a council, we have to let the administrator know. We have confidence, and we got to have that trust there that we trust him, because if we don't trust him, then we don't need him. You got to have that trust there. So, it comes down to, if you see five cents over here that's off, or whatever, then you can give him a question. "Now, you got five cents, and I saw $10,000 over here. Well, what happened to it? What happened to it?" See, you're living up and telling him, "I don't trust you, so I'm just going to step on everything that you possibly do." Like, this morning, we went through the budget. There were some things not that Councilman Brantley did not approve of. His awareness was not to the level he thought that should be. So, he asked the question, "What do we need? $20,000 on your phone?" Good question. These are the kinds of things we want to do rather than putting people down. Also, my second motto, stay away from these employees.
Yeah.
Because you're going to get in trouble if you don't. Stay away from them, leave them alone. If you've got a concern, pick it where Mr. Foley, those are his employees. And just because we're on council, that doesn't give us the authority to run around the county to everybody. Gets to the point where when people see you coming, they start running to them. You know, they start running because they don't wanna be bothered. They don't wanna be bothered, they're kind of. But like you say, because we're by each other, we are councilmen, they try to tolerate you, but a lot of them get out of lunch. I get phone calls, I get phone calls. So we just need to work as one, work together, and let's do what's best for Jasper County. That's what we need to concentrate on more than anything.
Madam Chair, I, I don't even want to pretend how hard it must be to be a council member and have constituents in your, in your business and have county employees as your constituents too. I know that's difficult, so I appreciate how you all do confide in me and communicate with me. But I, I think, you know, this information is very important, so I think what we need to do is make this more of a part of the.
I'm a chairman of the board, Mr. Foley, I'd like to introduce these guys.
All right, Madam Chair, Members of Council, thank you. Good lunch break. And now you have Economic Development 101. This is sort of a add-on to, we had a little appetite tasting and start with this topic when we had to deal with the city and got together and did the Economic Development IDA. And you remember Ryan back there? Ryan was a part of that, he's used to this room and used to working on all these kind of things. And now you have Mark and Azad with you from Parker Book Consulting. And you may remember that you authorized us to get into a professional services arrangement of Parker Book Consulting to sort of help us with our billows and manage that process now that we've got so many of them on the books. Make sure that we're billing correctly and make sure we can understand what revenue we may have in the future, and make sure that the auditor has the information that she needs to correctly bill these folks. So with that, I'll kind of turn it over. They have hard copies that they're passing out of the presentation. Incidentally, I can send you a digital version of a previous presentation, and to the temp, I already told you I hope you, I'll send you all digital presentations from Friday's meeting as well on the airport, and all the CCA habits for your services. Who's gonna start, Mark?
Yes. So my name is Mark.
Sorry.
My name is Mark Simmons. I'm a senior principal of Parker Book Consulting, a little bit different law firm. About eleven years ago, we started consulting practice. Azad and I both serve in that consulting practice. Neither of Azad or I are attorneys. We're just an economic development organization. Yeah, I'm a senior, well, just because I'm old, I guess. They feel good about it saying that label may, I guess, is where the buck stops. But, but our business really, and what we did prior to starting consulting practice is Azad and I worked for various state regional economic development organizations. I was in Columbia with the regional economic development organization for, oh heck, about twenty years. I was in Florence for a while running their program. I was in Asheville running their economic development program for a while as well. Azad worked for the State Department of Commerce, where he started his career, and then he came to work with me in the regional, and we've just kind of joined forces about ten years ago. And we have started and developed this consulting practice where about eighty percent of our clients are corporate companies, so they're, you know, corporate entities, that we're helping them find new sites and expand their businesses in locations, not only in South Carolina, but throughout southeast of the country. About twenty percent of our practice, because we have our toes in economic development work, and that's where our souls are forever, we help counties and the states sometimes and regional organizations do things like looking at their taxes or helping them with marketing programs or helping them. We've done a little bit of head-on work for displaced economic developers and local economic development organizations, a little bit of everything on the economic development side. Ryan, I think you guys met before, Ryan's an attorney with Parker Code, works for Ray. But Ryan's, I'm kind of joking, Ryan is the brain trust behind Ray Jones, so he knows what's going on, but go ahead. What I thought I'd do, one more, what I thought I'd do is try to define what we call economic development. You know, again, we've been doing it for years, wanted to kind of boil it down in its simplest form, and really, I mean, if you ask, you know, twenty people out there what, what they think economic development is, you'll get twenty different answers. But we tried to boil it down in the simplest form, and the best definition that we came up with is that economic development is a process of creating wealth, thereby raising the standard of living for all individuals within the community. That's really our goal, and it should be the goal of every economic development group out there. The way you create wealth, we think, is by recruiting and nurturing activities that export goods and services and import dollars. If you don't get anything out of what I say for the next thirty minutes or so, remember that. That's really what you're trying to do. You're trying to concentrate on companies or activities that are sending their goods and services outside the community and bringing dollars inside the community. There are five ways to create wealth, please see. The first two are the things that you hear about the most. It's the, number one is the sections, recruiting new companies into your community. If you recruit especially a manufacturer in the community, they're making their widgets, they're selling those widgets outside the community, they're bringing those dollars outside the community, back into the community to pay their, pay for wages, to pick materials, things like that. Also, what's, what's not as sexy, but probably is, is important, some people think is more important, is trying to help your existing industries expand. If you don't have a mechanism or a program whereby you're touching those existing industries and seeing if there aren't any problems and seeing if they need help, you should. That, you know, you certainly have a lot better chance of having an existing industry expand and add more employment and more capital in your community and do more things than trying to recruit a new one into, into the community itself. The third, fourth, and fifth items, support and assist entrepreneurs. Of course, entrepreneurs are people that start businesses, they may export goods and services, import dollars, but it's tough, it's a lot tough. They're usually doing it by bootstraps, they're startups, they're undercapitalized, it's just a harder thing to do, but you'll do see some communities have programs where they try to assist an entrepreneur through small business development activities and things like that. Transfer payments or special deals. They're like, the best example I can use, even where I'm from, in Columbia's Fort Jackson, it's where you have a whole lot of federal dollars coming in, it's around Fort Jackson, and that's, that certainly is new money to the economy that pays for a lot of services, pays for a lot of people in the community. And then, of course, tourism activities, which might be a little bit more, and typically destination tourism activities. Again, you're looking at people coming outside of your community, coming in, paying for hotel rooms, paying for meals, paying for things like that. So, you know, this whole idea of creating wealth or concentrating on companies that export goods and services, again, a great, the great, you know, the great example is manufacturers. You know, a lot of people say, well, if we got another McDonald's on the corner, that's a great thing, that's economic development. In my book, it's not. I mean, that's just, you're just trading money with each other around town. They're coming in, you're buying a meal, it's not eighteen dollars that are coming from the outside, they're paying their people, and everybody's just trading money. So this whole idea of creating wealth and, and is all about bringing money from the outside into the community. So I mentioned that, you know, and I want to jump around a little bit because I know Ray did a presentation, I guess, back in the fall or so, that was more concentrated on the incentive side. But from a company, you know, I mentioned that, you know, the majority of work is working with companies looking for delocations. I want to give you their perspective, and it can be probably summed up to following three bullets. One, they're profit-driven. They don't locate the location just because you're nice people, they don't locate the location because it's a great place to live. They locate the new location in order to make money. They've got to make money in, in order to stay alive, they've got to return that money to their shareholders and their investors. So they, they, they locate the new location for the investment, and they make the investment for a term. They're deadline-driven, both on the site selection and the project. Usually, they're looking to try to capture a new market or take market share away from another competitor, that's what it's like. So they're wanting to do that very, very quickly, get in, get what they need to be done, get into production, and start servicing those new customers. It's very competitive. Again, you typically, you know, don't win a project. What these companies do, they look at multiple locations, or they make sure, in our case, they'll get multiple states. And, and they will select their location that is the best for them from a competitive standpoint, where they can lower their cost and get what they need, that's the big thing. We'll talk a little bit about that. Their decision is comprehensive, it's not just like, hey, you got a great site, you got a great building, we think we'll go there. They're wanting to look at labor, they're wanting to look at taxes, they're wanting utility costs, they won't look at the bride and if the package. So they're looking at some, from a very, very comprehensive viewpoint. They're risk adverse, they hate risk. It's kind of like, I guess, it's like the stock market that hates risk. They crave predictability. If, they need fifty thousand gallons a day of sewer, and you've got that, but they get a sense that they may need a hundred thousand, not a hundred thousand gallons two years from now, and y'all have a treatment.
Capacity problem?
That's a risk. It can't, it's not flowing along with what they're wanting to do. And then lastly, speed, again, it goes back to being deadline-driven. They want to capture the new market quickly, they want to get it in place quickly, and that's really is what's changed, I guess, over the last twenty, twenty-five years that I've been doing this. Decisions are made more quickly and typically are further, they're further along the process before you even know that they're looking into your community. A lot of things are being done on the internet now, it used to be done between sharing questionnaires or actually making visits. Go ahead. So the location process, again, from a company's perspective, is not rocket science. It is very sequential and very logical. The companies develop a set of criteria, and they either develop their must-haves and their wants. They go down, down the line and say, hey, we need a hundred thousand square foot building with these dimensions, that has this sort of capacity and this large capacity. We may want rail, we may want to be close to a port. You know, they'll develop those criteria, and then they'll go start out looking. The initial screening is where we actually solicit, and they pick the geography, so we, you know, we want to be in the Carolinas or Georgia. So we'll go to those states and solicit those states for buildings or sites that meet the criteria that those companies are developing, trying to make a match. We assess those locations, we do some negotiation on the backside regarding incentives, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. We make field visits to those locations in order to verify what they told us is correct. And then at the last, the last step, phase five, we negotiate and select the site. Some of the location criteria, to just give you a sense of what, what is entailed or what the company thinks about when they go about doing an expansion or a relocation, covers a bunch of different areas. You can see labor, for instance, they're looking at labor availability, the competition for labor locally, how productive is the labor force locally, what kind of recruiting and training program we're in place at the state level, they take advantage of, things like that. Again, cost of living, accessibility and logistics, hey, how far are we from our key customers, because that means cost. How far are we from our, some of our suppliers, distance from other company facilities, operating environment, real estate, support services, infrastructure. And again, the, the initial cut, I guess, is based upon cost. Startup cost is ongoing cost. The startup cost is, how much is that land really gonna cost us? If we have to build, how much is that gonna cost us? What's the site prep? You know, what's, what are we gonna have to go through to get people hired and trained? And then ongoing costs include labor costs, what are the taxes, state and local? What are our logistics costs? What's it gonna take to get our raw materials in and our finished product out? The utilities cost, that's not only water and sewer, electricity, natural gas, that's what. You look like you got no questions.
No.
Okay, y'all stop me if you have a question, sir. And then finally, on the incentive side, we look at incentives that could affect startup, you know, upfront cash payments, financing, site improvements that the state may participate in or the local community may, uh, participate in, cash in other words, in mind for grants. And then ongoing type incentives, like what you've heard a little bit about, feeing the tax, specials revenue credits, any exemptions are out there. There's loose, there's a whole set of sales tax exemptions that are applicable to a lot of these projects. Whatever REDDIE SC that you guys may be familiar with, which is the state training program, whatever REDDIE SC can bring to the table, that the company doesn't have to pay for. And then a lot of utilities, including, I guess, the major utility in that here is Dominion, a lot of them have rebates or, or what we call economic development riders, that takes a little bit off that rate for her four, five years of operations. So all this to say, Jasper County never wins a project. What you do is you don't lose one. It's a process of elimination. We put, we've got all the candidate locations at the top of this funnel. We define our, our region, our search region, we go through screening, they develop project criteria, what they must have, what they really would like to have, we screen everything that comes back through us, to us. We actually set up a comparative matrix where we've got sites all across the top page, all the costs along the other side of the page, and we start checking boxes about who is the most competitive. And then the company goes through a decision-making analysis based upon cost and also some subjective factors, but again, some of the body of life factors are more subjective, coming in the instance, you know, what's the housing stock like in the community? We've had companies, various in what prime rate is, things like that. And then they go through the risk analysis piece, and out of the bottom drops two or three sites that either one of those sites could be a good location for the company. And that's when we kind of start talking about incentives.
Mark, can I, I have one thing. You talk about REDDIE SC, I don't know everybody, if everybody understands what they offer, but we work with the Technical College of the Low Country here. And I have heard over my years that what can be offered in South Carolina with regard to REDDIE SC is a great advantage over other states.
It is.
Can you just cover a little?
Sure, REDDIE SC is a workforce development program that's been around since the mid-sixties. Actually, Governor Hollings at the time put it in another place because he was very, very concerned that, and it was right during the textile industry was starting to go away in South Carolina, it's starting to move. So he was very concerned about, there are a lot of people out there that don't have the training for the types of companies that we see that have interest in the state. It's not up to those companies to train our people. We need to have those, those people trained to be able to accept those jobs. So REDDIE SC has kind of morphed or evolved into a, they provide training for companies that are coming in, they help those companies identify, which is very important these days, identify available labor, available labor to take those positions, and they do all of that free and charged to the company.
That's Elcock. That would be the Elcock?
No, sir.
No, it would be, it runs through your technical.
Technical College of the Low Country. Technical College of the Low Country?
Okay. But what is, how does Elcock involve with that? Because they have the same work development. They have a work development area up there.
Oh, he's talking about workforce development through the college?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we very rarely see Elcock do that, but they might be doing something out here that we're not aware of.
They have a workforce development arm or department.
Some of the, some of the colleges might be doing in combat work for training, where they're taking existing employees or, you know, companies that have existing employees and retraining them for new jobs within the company. That may be where they're, they are.
But they're training in Hampton, the Hampton, that big Hampton farm? I think they're training for that. I think they're training for that.
Okay.
That was part of the deal, I think.
They may be running some after the park.
They may be doing, I don't know.
They may be doing something that's really high.
I tell you, a bad example is we had Bee Green that came in. They'd ever produced like they were supposed to. But Bee Green Packaging came in and the Ready SC folks came in and sat down with them and designed a curriculum for the people to go through.
Sure. They recruit employees for you.
They do job fairs and they put them through the training and they could not believe the company should come over here and all that was free.
And it's great. And what happens is a lot of companies really don't understand the true value of that until they get through the process. You can build a building, you can hire a bunch of people, but if you can't get them doing what you need them to do, you're not going to be successful. So this program actually ensures that those people are going to be able to go to work for you and to not create waste, to do the job and that sort of thing. The key about Ready SC is that anytime the company has an expansion, I need more employees, you just do the process all over again through Ready SC and help them on the expansion. There are other programs in other states. I think Georgia has a Quick Start. Quick Start is what they call it. They call it something else in North Carolina. South Carolina's program is an old program that has trained hundreds of thousands of people since they started, from mom and pop type companies up through the Boeings and the BMWs and of all those. To give you a sense of what people are thinking about right now, Area Development, which is a trade magazine that is in the industry, surveys corporate, corporate folks once, well, they said corporate one here. They typically do it annually. And they ask them to like, what are some of the most important site selection factors in their mind? So you can see, we've got listed here data for 2020 and 2021. It doesn't move a whole lot every year, but you can see where labor is the big issue. And it continues to be a big issue these days. Labor costs, the bigger issue is not availability of labor. Energy availability and cost outbound and inbound, outbound and inbound shipping cost, highway accessibility, raw material availability. You can see where it takes, we're down to number eight before we get to incentives. And I'll talk more about how important are incentives? But you see some of the other things that they have listed here and how relatively important it is to these. I think they survey 350, 400 corporate execs every year to see what they're thinking. So a little bit about incentives. From a company's standpoint, incentives are important. Anybody in that camp? But incentives are tiebreakers of the best. So you get through that process that we just talked about. And that pops down to about two or three sites from a cost standpoint from their desires and wants and how they, then the company tries to improve on that position through the use of incentives. So certainly a good thing to take away from this slide is that there is no amount of incentives that make a bad site good. Either a site is good or it's not. And incentives aren't going to make it any better. The company's perspective, they look at incentives from kind of three different areas. One is what does an incentive do for my cash flow? So cash flow incentives tend to be up on grants. If you have a company cash, they're going to use it, you know, or if you even, if, if... The state, here in South Carolina, you've never handed a company cash for any way they want to spend it. Typically, it's spent only on real property improvements. And they've done that for a reason. If the company blows up three or four years from now, you know that whatever they spent cash on continues to be taxable in the community. So basically, we say, hey, you can only spend it on site prep, building, building type costs. Low-cost loans, infrastructure improvements, that's money that the company doesn't have to spend if they need a sewer extension to the facility, bond financing. A lot of times, you know, and we don't see this as much as prevalent now as it used to be, a lot of communities had free land or free buildings, especially if the community was involved in building. Communities really aren't a real estate business. They're the tax collections and jobs business. So they really don't have the whole idea of making a return on the real estate. Speed to market, expedited permitting. You've got to get up and run fast. So anything you can do to help us get permitting, that'd be great. For instance, if you could assign a building inspector to our project that's on call and is a liaison for us to help us get through that process as quickly as we can, that's great. Incentive approval processes, and those types, some of those things take time. You all know that, you know, to do a feed takes three weeks, pub here. Well, that's probably two months, along with one somewhere. A ready site. And I'll talk a little bit more about how important sites and buildings are. But a site that is marketable, a site that already has, it's not just a... But I've been in a lot of site visits in communities throughout the country where we'll ride by a patch of woods and they say, here's our industrial site. Well, hell, it's a patch of woods. It's not an industrial site. Doesn't have water and sewer there. Electricity needs to be extended. There's no natural gas. I would suggest to you that that's not a site, that's just a patch of woods. Same way for buildings. You know, you've got a lot of communities that are getting into the, you know, let's build a spec building. Not a bad thing. It certainly draws a lot of attention because those are so few and far between these days that my will really concentrates on those buildings because it is a way to get our clients up and running a heck of a lot quicker than if we had to clear off a site and build a building. It's always safe to say. And then there are incentives with regard to trying to reduce operating costs or ongoing costs or recurring costs, however you want to find that. They tend to be the FLO and SSRC, tax credits, utility rate riders, anything that lowers the cost for them doing business over time. So we've touched on incentives, I want to go back to five. You know, product is like, I guess, a saying that, you know, you can't sell something from an empty wagon. You certainly can't sell your community if you don't have a site or a building that would attract that corporate company or that company to your community to look for. So anything that you guys do with regard to preparing, when we see anything from, you know, the county acquiring the site, you know, we'll see a lot of counties that will say, hey, let's just, let's just rough rate the site. It looks a lot better than it does a little bunch of trees. It looks like it's supposed to be an industrial site. To building spec buildings, to getting into park development business. But anything that you can do to create that product that attracts that client to your community in the first place, that at least gets your foot in the door to start having the conversations about that company coming to your community. Again, no amount of incentives make a bad site good. You've got to have the product in place in order to even get it again. So some of the things that, you know, I want to touch on just briefly that Ray went over and maybe even at a higher level. Just I've had to set in a presentation about bond buying and Ray and all that. Mine is rolling up back in my head. I feel for you all. But there are three really tools that the county has to work with in South Carolina. One is the feeing of taxes. You hear us call it FLO or FE, very interchangeably. The other is this thing called Multi-County Industrial Park, which I think some of you have some experience with that. You also hear us refer to it as a MCIP or a park. And the third thing is an infrastructure credit. You also hear it to be called special source revenue credits or just credits. Beginning with the fee, just basics. FLOs originated in late 1980s. They actually were in a bill that was called the South Carolina Tax Simplification Act, if you believe that. It did really simplify a lot. But it's really just a property tax incentives that allows the counties to reduce the assessment ratio, and I'm talking really about manufacturing property here. From 9% to a low of 6% or anywhere in between. We are in South Carolina, and I'm a little bit biased because that's where I live, at a disadvantage to the other states around us. Our manufacturing tax rates are probably some of the highest in the country, given how the rates are applied. To give you, for instance, I guess, probably for $100 or so in value, our rates are in the 3.25, 3.50, $400 value. We're seeing those rates in North Carolina at 20, 30, 40 cents, $400. Now, there are other costs in those other states. But what will happen is you'll get a company that's glued in on the big disparity between property tax rates in South Carolina versus other places that they're looking. So I think this feeing of tax was meant to achieve some parity with the states that we're competing with, Carolinas, Georgia, Tennessee, Kentucky, Almama, to give us some parity in order to reduce those rates, to be a little more competitive and trying to attract those companies to our state. It's one of the more popular incentives, certainly. And typically, counties automatically, from manufacturing project meeting size, they'll automatically agree to a fee. And we'll talk a little bit and we'll see how it applies and what difference it makes. In order to do a feeing of taxes in South Carolina, the company that you're dealing with has to make a, has to commit to a minimum investment of $2.5 million within the county within a five-year period. If the taxpayer does not make that minimum investment in that investment period, then that fee is terminated and the company owes the difference between what he ordered for fee benefits and what he would have paid as they have gone taxes retroactively back to when the agreement was made. So there's certainly some penalty there. Go ahead. What I want to try to do, a lot of people, I mean, especially, I tend to see that the media will say, oh, well, they're, you know, they're going to pay taxes 60%. Well, that's really not how taxes are calculated. This is the other thing. If you don't take away anything other than this, this is how taxing, it's real simple, but a lot of people get it wrong, or how taxes are calculated, property taxes are calculated in South Carolina. You've got, it's really a formula of A times B times C, where A is the fair market value of the property, B is the assessment rate. Residential property in South Carolina is assessed at 4%. Commercial property is assessed at 6%. That's office buildings, retail locations, things like that. Manufacturing property with some gas tax rebates is now assessed at 9%. So you take the value of the property, times the assessment rate, times whatever the tax rate is. So you all know that you different tax districts have different tax rates. So you can see, if you think about it, you can see that the manufacturer paying everyone taxes is paying a whole lot more everyone taxes on a dollar-to-dollar basis than your residential properties are. Counties love manufacturers. They generate a lot of property tax. And that's a good thing. So like I say, under normal circumstances for manufacturers, typically from a have-alarm standpoint, they'll be paying an assessment rate of 9%. And if C will be the millage rate or whatever the tax rate is associated with that district. So this is what a fee does. Under a fee, that formula stays in place. But instead of using a 9% assessment rate, you're allowed to negotiate the rate of 6% or even 4% for very large projects. I mean, projects that I think invest over $150 million to meet some, meet some, you know, job creation requirements or they can ask for 4%. And then you use that same millage rate in the calculation. So you can see that instead of saying, hey, A times B is 9%, you use B at 6% and reduces those rates. So the taxpayer will save over the long run because B is lower than the normal property taxes. And the other thing that a fee does is typically fixes C, which is the tax rate, over the term of their agreement. We call it lock millers. There is a situation where the county could say, hey, instead of locking the millage, we want to do a five-year adjusted millage, which just means that every five years, we want to raise the millage by the percentage increase over the previous five years. I don't know that it has a lot of impact. A lot of counties, Spartanburg County, for instance, doesn't do anything but adjusting the millage every five years. They won't do a lot of millage. But unless your millage is growing up quickly, it's not making you a whole lot of money because you're only adjusting that millage by the average increase over the previous five years. Multi-County parks. Again, 1980s, multi-county parks were actually developed. I was there to initially promote regional cooperation. It was a way in which the two counties could work together to actually develop a physical park. Those African outdevils did away with that. They kind of figured out a way to kind of make it work for us and I helped to develop parks, which we did. Only contiguous counties made form parks, I think. Andy, you mentioned that one of your parks is with Beaufort County or all your parks were Beaufort County.
Some with Hampton and some with Beaufort.
They've got to be contiguous. Any property within just Bay County is going to be designated as a park. You don't have to be on the border. So you can designate that, you know, piece of property in the middle of county as being a park. Multiple counties may form parks. There are some parks out there that have more than just two participants. There are some even in the Southern Carolina lines area that have three and four counties that are participants in the park agreement. Most every project we work, that we work these days will ask to be included in a park. And the benefits include automatically another $1,000 per job, the jobs tax fee, which is state income tax credit that the company gets. And then the ability also to use the revenue from the park to help with infrastructure improvements. We have some counties that have taken multi-county park revenue because I think as Ray mentioned to you before, it's not subject to strictly busting up the revenue stream amongst all the taxing entities, i.e. the city, the county, the schools. The county can use some of that money or all of that money if it wants to, to put into our lives, to put in other infrastructure that would help in the development of the park.
Mr. Ken?
Yes?
What would be the benefit of having multiple counties in a park?
We see those mostly where they're actually trying to develop this property and the costs are pretty high. And they're wanting more counties to participate in that cost.
Now, Mr. Ken, also, just more ceremonially or to have some political influence, it can be done. We did Jasper Ocean Terminal Site is in a park with all the counties in the Southern Carolina lines. So they all have a vested interest in sort of supporting.
Now, is that all just 1%?
Yeah, currently, yes.
Typically, it's, for instance, in, I guess, it's in Jasper. You know, if you've got three people, if you are four people, if you're five or so. Four people, it's 95, 1, 1, 1, 1. So, you know, you get 95% of revenue that a county does, but everybody else has to have at least 1% for the park. All right. The benefits, again, $1,000 per job increase in what we call a jobs tax credit and also the structural expenses. So how do more county parks work there? They're pretty easy to do. It's all based upon that A, B, A times B times C formula. The multi-county park status doesn't affect the formula at all, but it may affect the way the revenue results in from the formula split up. Again, you know, the existence of a multi-county park allows the county to have sole discretion over how that revenue is being split amongst the tax counties. Most counties split that revenue as if it were having on taxes. So if the school districts take as 50% of the taxes and the county's 25%, the city's 25%, that's typically how that revenue is split up. Infrastructure credit. So once you all have heard of special source revenue credits, credits, as you call them, these are arrangements that are normally completed as part of the fee and multi-county park arrangements. They're really designed to be a reimbursement to the company. The effect is to really reduce the company's property tax bill by the amount of credit. The credit is to be used for infrastructure. Well, let me tell you, that means more than what you think it means. You know, when we think of infrastructure, we think of water and sewer and roads and rail and things like that. Well, infrastructure is defined in state statute to be any real or personal property improvements. So they could use it to help themselves, you know, pay part of the building cost. costs, they could use it against some of their equipment costs, there's really no limit, and there's no limit to the amount of reduction that you can provide. We've got, there are some deals out there that I scratch my head about, where you see that, you know, a county has offered a company a ninety percent credit, that means that ninety percent of the bill they're giving back to them. Well, I don't know how that's good for the county, but we typically see that those credits are in, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent for some length of time. The way this works is that, you know, on manufacturers, the state will prepare the fee, the FLO bill, or the fee bill, they'll come back to the auditor, and the auditor will take off the credit that has been negotiated before they send the bill out to the company. Again, credits do not affect the basic formula, it's that A times B times C formula. Credits do reduce the overall fee payment. So if we look at an example, and say that our A times B times C yields an annual fee and lieu tax payment equal of a hundred dollars, and if the county has agreed to give the company a credit of twenty percent for ten years, and we multiply that hundred-dollar annual payment times twenty percent, which leaves a net payment of eighty dollars, so the company instead of paying a hundred dollars, is going to be paying eighty dollars, you don't, you guys have given them a credit of twenty percent. And again, the taxing entities, the school district, county, city, et cetera, split eighty dollars instead of a hundred dollars, so the credit comes off before any revenue split is made. And the arrangement, because we've agreed to offer a twenty percent credit for ten year, ten years, arrangement lasts for ten years. So here are some illustrations, maybe it makes more sense. This is an abhorrent illustration, abhorrent illustration on normal, normal property taxes, no fee, no nothing. So let's say we've got a piece of property that's worth a million dollars, the normal assessment rate is manufacturing piece of property, assessment rate is nine percent, and millage rate is a hundred. So a million times nine percent times ten percent is nine thousand dollars, that would be the payment, the company would make. And if you split it as if, or abhorrent, you know, abhorrent taxes, now let's just pretend that the school districts, their portion of the millage rate is fifty percent, the county's proportion is twenty-five percent, the city's proportion is twenty-five percent, you see how that nine thousand dollars is split up amongst the entities. So let's add the fee on top of that, so now we've got a deal where we're offering a payment on tax, and we use our ABC formula, and we've got another, you know, million dollars, but instead of using nine percent, we're using six percent, we've reduced the fee, we've reduced the assessment rate for the company down to six percent, and again, we've got a hundred, a hundred mills that are going to be paying. So our ABC formula would result in a payment of six thousand dollars. So if you recall, abhorrent taxes, nine thousand dollars, this creates automatically a thirty percent savings for the company, that's what they're paying for, and that's what these fees do. Again, if you split the, split the resulting stream, annual payment amongst the taxing entities, given the same percentages, you'll see what goes to the school district, county, and city. Let's say we add a multi-county park on top of the fee. And the county splits the revenues with Spartanburg County, so Hampton County, ninety-nine, one. And what's further said, the counties decided to divide its share of revenue in accordance with millage rates. So again, we use our ABC formula, million dollars, times six percent, which is that reduced assessment rate, times a hundred mills, we yield the payment of six, six, six thousand dollars that we got before. But now, we've got to pay a partner county one percent of that six thousand dollars, which is sixty bucks, so we pay that sixty bucks to the partner county, and then we take the resulting fifty-nine-hundred-and-forty bucks and split it amongst, amongst the taxing entities. So that's how the park works, or how it affects your revenue stream. And then lastly, here we've got a fee plus a park plus a credit, and we're going to suggest that you've agreed to provide a twenty percent credit for a period of the first ten years of operating the company's operations. Again, we're back to our ABC formula, you've got a million dollars, remember, we're using a six percent assessment ratio, so nine percent, times a hundred mills, equals the payment of six thousand dollars that we got before. Then, this amount is reduced by twenty percent, that's what we're giving back to the company, that leaves a net of forty-eight hundred dollars. Got forty-eight hundred dollars. Then one percent goes to the partner county, for the multi-county industrial property, that leaves a net of forty-seven-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars, and you can see how that's split amongst all the different taxing entities within the county. So you can see the effects of abhorrent tax versus the fee, versus adding, I mean, adding a multi-county park into it, and also a credit. So, that's about all I've got, that's very high level, I've developed some tools that you all have to play with. I'm not a Bear Bryant fan, I'm a personal guy, so, but Bear Bryant did say a couple things that are pretty good. One was, it's not the will to win the matters, everyone's got a will to win, it's a will to prepare the matters. And again, I go back to being prepared, knowing your product, having product available, surrounding yourself with a good team, listening to what the prospect has to say. A lot of times, I'll roll into a county or into a state, and they tell me what they want me to hear rather than listening to what my client needs, and we just never get on the same page. Always look to have value in the process, be responsive, these companies are moving quick, and if you're not responsive, they send, strike you off the list and move on to the next location. Again, this is a process elimination, you don't rim, you just don't lose, and you don't lose by being responsive, and then being persistent as well. Now, what I want to do, you guys have any questions?
Yes. Do you understand you can say that your primary service is recruitment?
We, we work with company side, so we actually represent companies that are looking for new locations. That's about eighty percent of the work we do, the other twenty percent, if we work with counties, states, and regions, on their economic goal.
Not the county, but the, uh...
Oh.
The company?
Yep.
Okay, such in the case, then my question won't be applicable to you then.
We do a lot of that, so...
Okay. When you said you used twenty percent, is that a norm, or is that just something you said about there?
We've got, there, there are some counties, John, that, you know, some of the larger counties, well, I didn't say that, counties that have high millage rates, typically use larger credits, for instance, if you go to Aiken, I think their millage, they've been good at keeping the mills, really through Svenner and plant, and some of the others, where they're, they're very large tax maker. Their average millage over in Aiken is probably two seventy, two eighty, I don't think that they busted three hundred mills yet. So they can afford, just, their, their millage rate is lower than a county with four hundred and fifty mills, it's still in a twenty percent cut, so, I mean, they don't have to do it. We've got some counties, like Ritzom County, that, you know, were pushing six hundred mills in some areas, that are, wow, look, come on, we'll do the fifty percent for ten years, we'll cut that bill in half, because we got to know that we're going to have to effectively reduce that millage more to be competitive. Most of the counties, I guess, that we see in South Carolina are probably somewhere between twenty and thirty, thirty-five percent for five to ten years, maybe fifteen years. We just did a project in Greenwood, I think, and, and a lot of times, we'll get creative, you know, we'll say, you know, and what we're really trying to do, of course, in those pieces I didn't talk about, is how personal property depreciates over time, so the value of that personal property is reducing over time, so there's less tax. We'll try to strike a deal where, hey, for the first five years, let's do a thirty-five percent credit, the next five years, let's do a twenty percent credit. We're still getting something, but we really want to front load that credit with the value of that personal property stock, so we'll, we'll see deals where we, where we gave the credits, you know, but most of them are probably at that twenty to thirty-five percent.
In our last meeting, when we had the group, what impressed me the most is bottom line, they don't care, whatever you do, it's the number they have. How do, how do you determine that? Or do you, it was a negotiation back and forth, and you were guessing where you wanted to be?
Somebody's got to come through, I'll tell the county, you know, tell me where you are, if I do, then I'll, I mean, I'll, I'll just be honest with you, we asked, we asked for what the county, we, we would ask what the county would be willing, what we think the county would be willing to do, plus twenty percent, and let the county come back, bring us back, and we'll end up, or at least I'll go, hey, you know, you know, there's fifty percent for ten years, they offer twenty percent for five years, or whatever, you know.
Negotiation.
It's more than negotiation.
And you were guessing where you want to be, where they want to be?
We're guessing to a certain degree, but what we have the benefit of is doing a hundred of these deals over the last ten years.
Now, when I...
We kind of know where we think the county would be, and we are certainly very much aware, because you guys stick it in your agenda packets, and we see our documents, we know what other people have got in your county. You've done previous deals where you've given credits, all that is public information, and we are aware of what has gone on in the past. But I, I am not, you know, I may be, it's because of, I guess, our public background, and our economic background, I am not in favor of hosing a camp, it never, it's not good for my client, my client's got to live in there, and they've got to deal with whatever deal was done. There have been some deals made where I don't think companies are paying their fair show tax, I just, I, I'm more, I think I have more longevity, if we both get up from the table, thinking we, we reach a fair, good deal.
Part of the negotiation, everybody wins.
Yeah.
I think apart it too, there are a few occasions where clients say, nor this deal to work, nor pencil this deal, we got to have a credit of X. So there are a few times when we know what the number is, but we're transparent about that too, I think about some of our deals we've done where if we don't get this credit, then the party cannot buy us.
Does it hurt to go in with a low wall, and goes on, because you're going to go in with a...
I'm going to count.
I mean, you want to spread that, you want to pick a big spread.
If, if anything comes to you, and if I've got a deal that's going to, you know, invest twenty-five, thirty million dollars for hiring fifty people at these wage levels, and Danny says, hey, we're going to do X, I'm going to count him and see if I can push a little bit, you know, because I, I, you know, I, I've been around long enough, and I've been in the county's shoes long enough to know when that breakpoint is, you know, to know what, hey, what we're asking for, if we're going for what we should do, and then I start working on my client.
Now, I have another question for Andy. How does Southern Carol, Southern Carolina Alliance, Southern Carolina Alliance is doing what our...
That's right, they're on our side, that's right.
So how do, how does that compare, I mean, how do we communicate to them that we want to go high, lower, do we get that?
Yeah, I think we've broken past the, everybody wants the Riverport deal, right? I think we're past that point.
Yeah, everybody asks for Riverport, because I like the first big one.
No, I'm just asking generally, you know, Riverport is, is someplace along the line, I'm just looking at new stuff coming in.
That's what, what we're doing, we have the actual investment number, Riverport was kind of what everybody wanted after Riverport, and then, so the next, next ones, they try to ramp up a little bit and not give as much, because that was, that was a huge investment too. So Sandy and Ryan were back on the company side, to try to work with them to say, yeah, but you're not investing this, and the jobs you're creating aren't this, and it's, I mean, it sounds like cutthroat stuff, but I think they both know their parameters pretty well.
And I'm just saying, I'm saying that you have the, we, we as a county have input to say, you, there's two negotiations really, one is between Southern Carolina Alliance and you...
Yes.
And Southern Carolina Alliance with the company. So you're saying, they're saying, well, you're going to get this at ten percent, we're saying, well, maybe fifteen percent.
And they typically, how it works is, they'll do that, and they'll come to me if they feel a little agitated and say, what do you think about that, should that be a little less, and, and then I, I kind of give them the nod, which way to go, and we cross our fingers, and then we go, then we bring it to you and say, this works for everybody.
We've got like an Excel sheet with all the ones we've done recently, with all the investment, jobs, credit amounts, we kind of know, like, how much is comfortable, and try to keep it pretty consistent. Down the other thing, and I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, but it's something that we have provided for other counties in the past, we have developed fiscal impact on the counties, where they can, they can put in all the county costs, I mean, for instance, hey, our, you know, if I got a company that's going to bring in fifty people, there's X, you know, three point five people per family, so that's going to be X number of families, what's that going to do with regard to our costs of providing police services, emergency services, trash pickup, all that stuff, all those things, and what we're giving up in incentives, you know, what we're trying to do is really a cost benefit analysis of where's, where's the break even when the county is losing money? That's a whole nother topic for a whole nother thing.
I think it's, I think it's sort of ramping up, I'd love to be there, I think these folks are starting to explore, decode that, the large residential subdivisions, to do an impact analysis on each one of them, so that they can decide whether they're a good dealer.
And four percent, I'm not supposed, you know, where this is stuff paid for, in terms of what it costs for service, that's our...
Oh, should, does Southern Carolina do that, have that set up?
Do they have any modeling for you, that, you know, S E F?
I don't, I don't know if they have it, okay, mom. The, the Zod is looking pretty honest, too, even though they're mostly on the side, you know, they're going...
Yeah, so, yeah, we can do, so this would have been a lot of what I mentioned, this is one that we make available for my license, and through our community, we'll probably just run it for you if you need it, but that's almost strictly for manufacturing and warehouse and office type projects.
I mean, that's something that, the information is out.
I've had counties to use that model to regroup, to witness, they go back and say, hey, we run this deal that you're asking for, so your model, it doesn't, it doesn't job, and I, you know, I'm getting more honest, I can get on, recent deals, or something.
Just they add the information, that's like, when I was, when the first county came out, I had a caterpillar dealer, he says, I, that character, that engine helped me a great deal, because I would make a deal based on what I thought, but I could put it in numbers, and all of a sudden, I gave a thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it's all, a part of our program is, just like everything else, we get more sophisticated as we grow, and now we've got a level of these filos around, as you know, we, we've settled sort of a policy with the city about how we're moving forward. The next step is, you've allowed us to hire Azad, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about what, what they can do next for us, so we can continue to try to continuously improve and ramp this process up for you.
Yeah, but John, you're seeing, I mean, it took a while, but you're, I mean, you're seeing, starting to see something, I mean, another thing that we typically do is, and that's present, I, analysis of these deals, because, you know, the fee deals are thirty year long, well, that dollar you're paying your first year, it's worth a heck lot more than a dollar you're paying your thirty, so, you know, what is the impact of this project in today's economy, we do a lot of that, but, I don't want to go too long, on hold, Azad, as Andy said, the guys have, we appreciate it, have hired us to help you with doing fee analysis, and some Gasky seventy-seven work, and that's one thing, so I think we're going to let Azad talk a little bit about what that is, how he's going to go about it, what the deliverable is, and hopefully how it can help you.
Hello, everyone, again, thank you all for having us, like Mark mentioned, I'm going to kind of talk through some of our, some of the projects we're going to work with you all on, so if you don't mind going to the next slide. So our scope includes two primary areas, the first is fee compliance, so let's talk about what fee compliance is. Mark spent some time walking through the mechanics of how a fee and lieu tax works, the benefits it provides to companies, and what I'm going to talk about is, what does it mean to actually ensure that the county is doing what it's supposed to do in regards to offering fee benefits, but also, are the taxpayers doing what they're supposed to do as far as being their assessment obligations? So the fee agreements, this incentive is typically wrapped up in a fee and lieu tax agreement, it's a fifteen to thirty-page contract whereby a company commits to, contractually commits to investing at least two and a half million dollars, which is the requirement by statute, but sometimes also more than that, sometimes it's five million, sometimes it's ten million, sometimes it's twenty million, and in exchange, the county agrees to offer these fee and lieu tax benefits, which, like Mark mentioned, can lower the assessment ratio from what is effectively nine percent down to as low as four percent. So what we do is part of fee compliance... So what we do as part of fee compliance is we work with county officials to obtain those, those contracts. So we want to see all copies of all the fee agreements. We want to see the multi-county park agreements. We want to see ordinances and we also want to see taxpayer data. So the way the benefits are applied is the taxpayer will file a property tax return. The Department of Revenue will process those returns. Those returns will reflect what the taxpayer has invested. They send that information down to the county auditor. The county auditor applies those credits that Mark just wrapped earlier, which could be 5%, 20%, it could be a fixed dollar amount. They really run the, the gap of how that is. It's 100% on occasion. And so the county auditor then applies those credits and issues a bill to the taxpayer. So imagine you're the county auditor, there are tens of thousands of property tax bills that the county auditor may issue in a single year. And there may be 20 fee and lieu tax bills that have to be prepared, which are unique from everything else. So, and not to mention, those, those fee agreements can be relatively complex in how those credits are applied. It could be a simple 20% off the fee amount, or it could be 5% this year, 10% the next year, 50%, 20%, and then go down to 10%. So there's really a whole lot of flexibility in how those deals are arranged and sometimes it can be quite complex. And so what we do is we help the county auditor review those legal contracts and fee agreements to understand how the credits should apply and then we assist with ensuring the credits are applied properly. And so like I mentioned, because there are so many normal property tax bills, it's sometimes easy to overlook or just not quite understand how a small subset of those tax bills should work. And so a big part of our, our compliance services is to help, help the auditors office ensure that the credits are being applied correctly. The second side of that is to make sure the taxpayers are doing what they said they would do. So typically a company will have a five-year investment period, which is the time they have to meet their investment obligations. And so in reviewing taxpayer data and again, in reviewing the fee agreements, we can say, okay, well, the taxpayer said they were going to invest in the dollars. Did they invest in million dollars by the timeline, by the deadline? Or where are they in that timeline? Or have they overshot it? And if they've undershot it, then we will advise the guys, hey, look, this taxpayer is not quite being their commitment. And then we'll, you know, talk to Ryan and Ray and say, look, this is what you have. These are your options under the fee agreement as to how to proceed and what to do next. So that's a big part of our, our fee compliance scope. The second thing that's a part of our, our scope is what we call Gatsby 77. So Gatsby stands for Government Accounting Standards Boards. It's similar to GAAP, which is accounting guidelines for accounting. But Gatsby is the government equivalent and they issue proclamations and regulations. Gatsby Statement Number 77 was issued in 2015 and it essentially requires the disclosure of tax statements that, that a government authority has entered into. So in this case, it would be Gatsby County. So the county is required to disclose in its financial statements what tax payment it has offered to taxpayers. It is also required to issue, to notify the affected governments. So in this case, it would be the school district. If the taxpayer has located in a city, it'd be city of Hartville or any other municipality. And really any other taxing entity that's part of the bill's right there. So for our Gatsby 77 services, what we do is we actually perform that tax payment calculation. So in its simplest form, that calculation is the difference between add the law tax and the fee and lieu tax payment that a company makes. It takes into account any credits that might apply, but at the end of the day, it tells the, 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 the public, here's what we did, here's what the county did to, to affect tax payments this year. But in that same respect, we think it's important to also inform the public and municipalities that have been affected of the revenue that was received. So again, you know, as part of your negotiations with companies to locate here, you might have to offer some tax payments in order to recruit them. So had you not offered those tax payments, maybe that taxpayer doesn't come at all. So we feel it's important to, to share with the public that, look, we offer these tax payments to different companies, but we also receive this revenue as a result of that. So as part of our work on Gatsby 77, we, we can buy both numbers. We say, here is what was abated as a result of these fee payments. Here's also the revenue that the county received or the municipalities was, who was received as a result of these revenues.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure.
And the way we do it now is, I believe the requirement is you only have to disclose that in the year that you did the deal, right? But we do that in our annual ACFER, not CAFR anymore.
ACFER.
But it's just for this year. So if you have one this year, you put it in there. And next year, if you have one, you put it in there and you forget about the last one. So we obviously want a running tally of these things so we can look at, say, the last five years, you have given away X in incentives, but look what you gained by doing that.
Right, that's exactly right.
And the point that Azad makes about selling the other side story is very, very important. I mean, Gatsby basically says, hey, you got to report what you gave up for me. Well, that's only part of the strategy. Say I gave up $10 to make 100 bucks. You need to talk about the 100 bucks as well. But maybe if you didn't give up the 10 bucks, you would never solve it. So, you know, when we talk about incentives, a lot of us would say, well, you know, 10% of 100 dollars is, you know, if I'm giving up 10% of 100 dollars, I'm giving up 10 bucks. That's a heck lot better than giving up 10% of that. We're making money. And while Gatsby only requires you to report what you've given up, we think it's also important for the general public to know, constituents to know what you've got that involves that.
So where does that get reported?
I think it's in the, in the PACF, PACF.
They're going to add it.
Oh, they're just going to add it, okay. Supplement it.
Yeah, the way we do that is we partner with Ryan and Ray. So I will do the, the financial calculation and Ray will actually prepare the narrative that goes in the PACF and then also prepare memos that go to the school district and the city of Hartville for the taxpayer there so that they are informed of what was abated on their behalf.
And, and that way every resident can see exactly what you put into the deal. There's no, no number moving around, everybody can see.
Typically, if you got more than one deal, we don't report on the individual company. We'll just report the PACF. Actually, did 10 deals, we'll say, county, you know, they offered up X in incentives for these 10 deals collectively, but here is the revenue side as well.
Do you place that against what you thought was going to happen? I mean, you have that other program where before you say, okay, we said at the beginning it was going to be $10, we gave away $10, it's got 100. But all of a sudden, actuality is we gave $20, got back $10. I mean, as a bad example.
So as part of like just ongoing modeling we do, we base it off of what the taxpayer tells us. So a company may say, well, we plan to invest $50 million over five years. So we say, we take them for the word and say, okay, here's how that will, here's what that will look like over the term of the fee. Now, when they actually start construction and start placing property in service, many times things don't work out the way they originally thought. They either invest more or less. And so there's no way for us to know for sure, but in the tax payment calculation is based on actuals. So it, because they actually invested 5 million, then we able, we calculate that based on actual number.
So bottom line, this is actually a poor point.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, we're looking at the income tax return, the property tax return. Property tax return so we know exactly what, what they're reporting, the number they're investing. It's, it's the basis.
It goes the other way as well. I mean, we had the solar farm project, we had a plug-in number that everybody thought would, where we'd be and it dramatically overperformed. The assessment was much higher than every income.
So that kind of is a great segue into the next slide here. That, you know, I talked about fee compliance, I talked about Gatsby 77. You may be wondering, well, how in the world are they doing this? And so this is how we do it. We have a, a three-step process. The first step is like I mentioned earlier, where we are in information learning phase. We're just trying to gather as much detail on the deal terms and the taxpayer data as we can. We need that, that forms the basis of our analysis. So the first step, like I said, we gather all the information. The second step is the financial analysis. And that's when we actually go through and say, okay, this company was, had entered into a fee agreement with the county. We know what their fee payment is because again, that information is processed in advance. How would taxes have been calculated under normal circumstances? So we perform that calculation. We take into account millage, we take into account local option sales tax credits, we take into account the actual assessment ratio for manufacturers. And then the difference between those two numbers is the tax payment. We also incorporate multi-county industrial park splits. So the 1% that goes to another county, that's technically an amendment that's not received by the school district, for example. So we factor it, we factor all those components into the calculation.
Is that, oh, mate, it's not, sorry.
Sure.
When you mentioned the multi-county park, I divulged to you that we have an issue with Beaufort County and the multi-county park payments, right? And so they are supposedly, you know, they're, they're willing to help us with that and make us whole for that. Well, we don't know what the number is, so. Azad's going to help us get to that point. We have several multi-county parks where you are the host county and Hampton is your partner county. We have several where you are the host county and Beaufort is your partner county. We've got to make sure everybody's paying their 1% like they're supposed to.
Yes, and so, so that's step two, we do the financial analysis.
As far as I know, we're fine. We're, no, no, we're fine with what we pay. We're not fine with what we're receiving from other counties.
Not good enough.
Yeah, and that's what they're going to help us define.
The third step is where we partner with Ryan and Ray's team to provide the disclosures that go into the county's ACF, sorry, most, I went with the CAFR, so.
It changed this year. It's not an annual comprehensive financial report.
Gotcha, gotcha. So like I mentioned, Ryan will prepare a narrative that describes, it meets all of the Gatsby 77 requirements. So it pops out the statutory, or the statute that allows it, it cites the current code, it describes why these deals are entered into. And then we slip in the number, the tax payment number. We also slip in the tax revenues that you got as part of each of the programs. So we have the fee and lieu tax program, we have the special source revenue credit program, and then the multi-county industrial park program. So those are wrapped up into a narrative that go into the financials and then we also, with Ryan's help, we prepare memos that go to the, the affected taxing entities.
Did I skip over your one slide? Did you want to come?
Yeah, go ahead. I think the next one is, oh, okay, yeah, go back. Sorry, go back one more.
I think I skipped over it.
So going back to the fee compliance, again, you may be saying, well, how is Azad going to help us with fee compliance? And then the answer is, well, again, we obtain all of the pertinent deal documentation. So the fee agreements, credit agreements, ordinances, park agreements, and then also taxpayer data. That's key to understanding whether or not the taxpayers have met their commitments, the commitments that they made under the fee agreements. So, and then the second step is pretty straightforward. We do the calculations, we help with ensuring the auditor's office understands how the credit should be applied. Also, at the same time, we help the treasurer's office understand that, hey, as the taxpayer pays their fee, here's how those funds should be allocated based on different fee agreements we all have with other counties and municipalities. So there's some overlap between fee compliance and Gatsby 77 scope primarily in the first step because really it's the incentive documents and it's the taxpayer data that forms the basis for all of this. We typically start these projects at the, after the fiscal year ends because taxpayers are still making tax payments now. And so, you know, this, we can raise our hand and say, well, such and such isn't, you know, following the terms of their agreement when they may still be paying taxes, right? So we typically wait to the end of the fiscal year, when it closes, then we start beginning the new fiscal year with both fee compliance and our Gatsby 77 scope. We typically provide or finalize the Gatsby scope in October and that's when we share the memos with, with you all and the narrative goes in the county's PACF.
So we would be in a much better position to provide you with the information about how you do it. Is this stuff working? Is it not working? Should you maybe craft your sentence differently? You can see all of that and so can the other entities. And then Azad, if you could just speak to a little bit about, we talked about maybe some projections so we could look at.
Yeah, yeah. So taxpayers that are on a calendar year fiscal year, their deadline to file property taxes is April 30th. And so that means that around this time of year, their data becomes available for review. And so using that data, we can say, okay, well, if they filed, let's say they placed a million dollars of service at the end of last year, that means that, and we understand the terms of their incentive agreements, that means that by January of next year, which is when taxes are due to be paid, they will pay $1,000 in fee revenue. And so we're able to, because that, that data is now being processed, we're able to use that and make some estimate of fee revenue in the future.
This should help you all out a little bit from a budget standpoint.
Oh, tremendous.
And know kind of what to expect. It's an estimate, you know, but what's, what's going to come out.
And there's some unknowns that we can't capture, right? So there's a chance that maybe a taxpayer down the road says, oh, you know what, we made a mistake in filing our property tax returns. They send an amendment, they get a refund. So some of that we can't, we can't anticipate that. But with what we know now, what we're able to obtain today, we can make estimates based on that information.
Of course, the county's not to provide the 1%. Is it just a-
I'm sorry?
We're, we're talking about, hey, that we're not getting paid from other counties or stuff like that. What audit is that?
We want to audit the-
Just an audit?
We want to audit Hampton County and vice versa. We want to make sure we're paying our fair share to them as well. And then we, we are also the receiving county, the partner county to some of Beaufort's projects too. So we want to make sure we're doing the right thing. But currently, Beaufort County is not paying their, their share with their 1%. And quite frankly, it's because they didn't, they didn't have any fee loads until fairly recently. And one, the one large one that we know is, is Walter. And that has sufficiently developed, so it's time to get that straight. And then they've had, with their new economic development group, I say new, it's been what, five, eight years now maybe? They, they are doing more and more filos and using us as a partner. And so we just want to make sure that everybody's doing what they're supposed to be doing.
Okay, do you want to give us the information that we need to make that assessment?
Yes, sir. They, they don't really have to. We can do that, but we'll, we'll get it all straight.
What, what determines, and this is for, I think, Andy or somebody, what determines what county we use?
It has to be contiguous.
I always, contiguous means we're fighting against. So it'd be, also it'd be Hampton and Beaufort, that's the only two, right?
Yes, sir, correct. And you can add as many as you want. You can pop all over the place. Maybe even have legal opinions that you can go across the river and do something in Georgia if you wanted to as an additional one. But we, we typically stick to one or the other and we've always stuck to the 1% so far. You don't have to do that. And then the only other one is, is the Jasper Ocean Terminal site, which is several. Which one?
Just remember now, years ago in ancient history, 2008 or '09, the first one we did with Beaufort County, as I recall, was because Hampton County and a bunch of other counties upstate a little bit decided that 1% wasn't good enough. They wanted an additional percentage.
Well, that, that's right. That's the, that's actually how Riverport got to be a part of Beaufort County versus Hampton County. We were always their partner and you're right. At one point they said, no, we want more than 1%. So we went to Beaufort County and said, we can take the 1%. They said, yeah.
There was also a kind of a entreaty to Beaufort to work with us better.
That's right. That's right. We're trying to get them to invest their money in the development of I-95 in the 17th quarter as a partner, so.
And Johnny, when, when the multi-county park legislation first came out, they required the county to be contiguous. What happened was we had the green walls in, in big counties of the world go out to talk shopping deals for less than 1%. So they would go down to, you know, now Alveil County, the people want to take a half percent or something less and strike a deal with the non-contiguous counties. Before the legislation came along, we said, no, we got mandated that the county had to take.
But John, what you could do is you could ask Beaufort County to invest heavily in infrastructure to develop a site and then you could pay them back as a business partner with a larger percentage of payment from a fee loan. That's something we, that's what we envisioned, we never got there. But that may be something that you could do too. we envisioned. We never got there. But that may be something that you could do too. Use, use investment and desire for, for them to have some economic development money coming in, but not have to do it in, in their neighborhood.
Right, right.
So you're developing perhaps 95, and they're benefiting, they're getting a check from that, but they're not having to deal with the traffic and all the other items.
What about Casper Ford? Would we enter, there's a file on that, right? There's something, there's a agreement.
There is currently. We did it at the, at the minimum 1%, but the creativity is endless there if you wanted to put that together.
But if you, if, could we get out of that and then redo it and say, go to Georgia?
You could do another one. You have to have the consent of the counties that are already in it.
It gets to be a little bit more complex trying to go to Georgia, because you have to also consider what Georgia's requiring.
Right.
I'm just saying, it would tie us in to Georgia more so than.
Absolutely agree with you. And it's, and that's why.
You were talking about political, there's.
Yes, sir, and investment, all those kinds of things. But, but that, you're thinking the right terms. And maybe these folks, can you think of a creative solution? Has anybody done that well?
You'd be breaking new ground and go across state lines, and I'm not quite sure if that's towards the end point.
How about not in state law? But I mean, just saying, as, as county is invested and then.
Well, yeah. Well, as I stated, recall that the multi-county park legislation was put together, really, the spirit of it was for two or three counties to go together and actually develop a physical park for which they all would benefit. So it wasn't just 1%. It was like, tell you what, you know, three, three, these two counties go in, we share the cost of infrastructure improvements to this park, but we would share 50% of the revenue stream too.
And that idea was floated at one point in the Point South area, literally within all the counties, Hampton, Beaufort, and Jasper County.
So I mean, it was created initially as a way for the counties to use the revenue stream associated with, you know, that to, to actually develop the park.
Well, I, I just, I think the most intriguing part is the program. You know, we have already done something. I'd like to see.
The results.
The future. And that's more the future. We're looking at the past, when really, we're already starting the future.
That's right.
Right now. I mean, this is.
And you have the tools to do it, so.
That's, that's where this whole thing, I get at it, is the future.
And any revenue created in the park is not having to tax, it's fee revenue. We've seen counties that take, you know, they get a big hit inside of a park, it's creating a stream of revenue, you know, the counties are a county or the counties can go together and basically bond that, you know, try to monetize that stream in order to develop some cash upfront, like do further infrastructure improvements, or expand the park boundaries, or do other things.
I really liked the Jasper Ford deal, getting over there. I mean, it would show us that we're, the money seems to be the, the big issue. Let's get them part of the partnership.
And I'd like to revive the previous discussion with Beaufort County about if they'd like to invest in, in some of the development we're doing here as, as a partner, and see if we could work out a deal with them to do that.
That's a low level economic development 101. But you can see it's got, you know.
I think I'm going to sign off for the next class.
There's a lot of different ways to spin a cap.
We haven't, how to get money out of the state. You have, I, I have another, another question, I guess, as it comes a lot. When you do the 20%, can you do zero, can you have a sliding scale so every year it goes up or down?
You can do it all the time.
Do anything you want to do.
You have anything you want to do. It doesn't have to be five years for 5%. So you could put the first two years zero.
Yep.
Or make it 50% or whatever, to give a benefit to them, so that they develop.
Well, that, that's what I'm going to be pushing you to do. I want more of that upfront, because it has more of an effect on my client. If they can get a bear, you know, tax credit upfront for the first two years, or the first three years, you kind of get some up and going, allows them for three years to depreciate some of their personal property or their equipment, which depreciates 11% a year, which comes, you know, we get that, that equation, that personal property that's valued less and less every year, so taxes are going down.
It's a incentive from us to make you work faster.
Yeah.
As a.
Exactly.
Because if you don't do it, you lose the benefit.
Exactly.
So you're seeing the ability to be very creative with this stuff, but again, I'll remind you, your creativity is really limited to how you can staff these things, because you can put together the brilliant deal, but when it, it lands in the auditor's office, you gotta understand, is she interpreting it correctly? Is she billing it correctly?
Right.
And that's why we want to provide that help to her, to make sure that we have the tools to be able to do that.
What I'm saying is, we get the expertise and we can be more creative.
I think that's, that's correct.
I mean, John, we've, we've got deals where, where you can talk about trying to incent companies to do more. They'll give you a 10% credit for the first five years, but if you invest more than X before those five years go out, then I'll bump that credit another 10%. It just pushes the company to try to, you know, invest more.
A great example of that sort of a trigger for a greater investment is the hospital project. And in fact, Ray Jones was the attorney for the hospital that came here. And David, you worked on that too. It had that. They met that threshold. They got the greater credit. And now it's, it's gone. They're paying straight taxes. So that's a great story to show how that, how that went.
Another thing too is, you know, to the extent that companies are not meeting their obligations, depending on what the language is in the fee agreement, there may be an opportunity to recoup incentives that had already been provided if they're not meeting.
Clawback.
Clawback, right. So.
How often does that happen?
Um, you know.
More than you'd like.
Sorry?
More than you'd like, or you'd like, never.
It depends on where, you know. I think a lot of counties, in my experience, will, you know, hey, no one's got a crystal ball, right? The company may say, we're going to invest $10 million by X day, and they make law sure by 9.8, you know, by a million dollars. So it has, will exercise some discretion and say, well, we understand, you know, you hit 9% of the goal, we'll let slide. Then, we see that happen more often than not. Rarely can we see a county say, you know what, you fell short, we want all money back. Because again, it's that whole crystal ball thing, right? COVID happened, downturn happened, you know.
But when we see clawbacks, guys, typically with companies that were old, they said they were going to invest $20 million and struggle to get $2 million.
And the county has come upfront with a lot of incentives upfront. So in those cases, we'll see a county say, well, we want all money back.
Well, I can see that was, that law was 2008 or what it was, what was the law?
1980.
1980?
Yeah.
And we're using $2 million back, $2.5 million back then? It's never been increased?
Yeah.
It's a little hurdle.
It is a hurdle.
It's a little hurdle.
Low hurdles go up to, I mean, it's just simple.
It's five if you're.
And you can also use the purchase of property in that number, so it needs to be lower. But what it also does is it helps any existing businesses who wants to expand, build a building, makes them qualify as well, so.
Can we, that's just a minimum though, right? We can, as a negotiation, we say, well, if you do 5 million, we don't have to use it.
If you're an existing company that want to do a million dollar expansion, want to hire 30 people, and they don't quite meet the, the terms of the fee, then we could, we can typically get around the fee legislation by just one credit. Put it in a multi-county park, do a, what we call a fee-like credit, which is 30% credit, if you think about it, you know, 9%, 6%. We'll do a fee-like credit for some period of time. We do that a lot when either whatever the company is spending isn't fee-eligible. Or anything, if it was ever going to buy a new building, and the building could already be, you know, set on tax rules, statutorily, any existing building is already on tax, tax rule without fee-eligibility. So you can't do a fee-on bill. We'll do a fee-on credit.
Yeah. And that, we've done several discredit agreements like that, that brings them down to the equivalent of a 6%.
6%, yeah.
Because as you said, you can't do it on an existing taxable product. Like KBRS right out here in 17, Shower Pan Company, they were, they took over a granite countertop factory and redid it and created this, and we have to do that for them. The New River Auto Mall on 170 Collision Center, same thing. They took over the old beer distributor and made it a collision center. So in order to help them, we have to do that credit. And then also Carolina.
Metal Castings?
Metal Castings, the one you had just recently talked about, with the, the building there, in the Hartville Industrial Park, was the, was the same way it was existing.
So the work that Zod's going to do, as you mentioned, I mean, it's about, you understand, you understand the fee deals where you said, hey, it's a company performing like this, or it's the Bill for Act, you know, are we billing too much? We're not billing enough. I mean, we had one county that had underestimated the bill over about a three-year period, some 400, about 1,000. This company, after some rumbling, said, yeah, you're right, we owe it, y'all have done the bill, so we're not going to provide it.
We're very good.
Yeah. So they, we went back and looked at the money. And we've had, we've had some counties that had agreed to a credit and just weren't applying it over time. So, you know, so we'll sketch those real quick. And, and then along with, you know, the GASP work that, you know, really is, you know, highly suggested by GASP to do, and then this whole idea of giving you some sense of trying to project what that fee revenue will be in the future, you know, for your budget purposes, I think hopefully.
Which is huge for county, and probably for the municipalities too, so they knew what, what they're playing for.
How would that work with Jasper, I mean, Southern Carolina Lines? I mean, wouldn't Southern Carolina Lines benefit that more than, or be part of that?
How so?
Well, they're negotiating for us.
Yes.
Right? They go in without, so we have to be ahead of the game. Father, that they always say to us in meetings, we're doing this, we're doing this, we're going out here, we're doing this. Yet if we don't, if we use this, they should be using it beforehand and say, okay, we're going to, we have this product coming in. How much can we give and still benefit?
Yeah, well, that's, that, you're talking about sort of a modeling before the deal, and we, we're not doing that, and then we're not, quite frankly, we're not paying for that yet, right?
No, I would like to see that though.
Yeah.
Because that is.
Well, that's something that they perhaps could talk to Southern Carolina Lines about, because I know Farmer Thomas uses those modeling tools. That's how they figure out their incentives, right?
On state side.
On state side.
Because that's where we, that's where it is.
And the Southern Carolina Lines, I mean, Danny and Sandy and all, I mean, and I guess Brad and that.
Yes, Brad.
They're good. They're good people. They're doing a job. But, you know, as you learn more about this, and you get your arms around how it works a little better, I, I think you'll probably want to be, give them a little bit more direction in what counties are going to be doing.
Yeah, you can give them some parameters, right? For number of employees, investments. You could target different areas differently. You could do a lot of, a lot of questions.
Do you want me to specify?
It's sort of like everything. The housing and with the industrial, you know, you just, you sit around and can't wait for it to happen, can't wait for it to happen, and all of a sudden, hits you like crazy, and you're like, it's starting to blow your brakes off. Wait a minute, we got to get control of this. And it's a good problem.
We probably won't have a lot.
We appreciate the dialogue. I think these guys are great, y'all.
We, we, whatever we consider, if more questions come up, just yell. We're, we're happy to, happy to.
Do you have carts?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.
Yeah, I was trying to eject it, to do the right thing here, but, you know, there we go. I didn't want to mess it up.
I appreciate that.
Assuming it's done.
Thank you so much.
Don't mind if I messed it up anymore. You're welcome. Took a little detour there, but we got it back on.
Kim, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank y'all.
And what I've handed out, we had two bond refundings in 2021, May and October. And so I wanted to sort of point out a couple of things that they, that the, this is from Standard and Poor's, global ratings. And part of the reason this relates to doing financial policies is that as we go through this, particularly the things that I've highlighted, they're very, they say more than once that if we had financial policies and if our reserves are higher and maintain a high reserve, then our bond rating would be better. It's not bad. I mean, it's AA, it's a double A minus and for the GO, and it's a double A, I believe, for the revenue bonds. This was just for the general obligation bonds. So, and that, and as a part of that process, the bond refunding, they, they get on, we have a group telephone call, and they ask, they ask, do you have any financial policies? What are your financial policies? And unfortunately, in both in May and October, I had to say, we don't really have anything in writing. And so that's where we're going with this. We want to put, we want to put those policies in writing to improve our bond ratings. So, and I just highlighted some of the areas, like under the credit overview, they basically said that we had consistently balanced financial operations, which have led to continued maintenance of very strong reserves. So they point out again and again about the very strong reserves. They think that management would likely continue to budget conservatively and maintain very strong available reserves through positive operations during the next two years. They have other observations. They mentioned very strong budget flexibility with available fund balance in the fiscal 2020, 42% of our operating expenditures. And there's others in there. I was just pointing out some of these that when we come back to you, we're going to have a, what we should do with our reserves, how much, what should our amount of reserves be? You know, those are the kind of things we need to think about. What should they be? So they also mentioned that they could, while not expected is what they put, we could lower the rating if reserves were to decrease significantly due to negative financial operations or if the local economy were to weaken. So again, they, they rely very heavily, they like to see that surplus. They like to see that high reserve. So that's something that I think we need to consider as we're making these policies. And then again, the upside of that is they could, they would raise our rating if wealth and income were to increase, coupled with implementing stronger financial policies and procedures. So again, having them in writing makes that stronger.
Is there any particular reason why we don't have that in writing?
I don't, I, I don't know. It hasn't been done prior to my arrival. So, and that, you know, it's, it's one of those things, but it's been on my to-do list, but it's higher up on my to-do list now, particularly after these.
Right.
We had these bond refundings, and I realize, as you can see in this, just how important it is to them. So. Ma'am?
We have this now, you know what?
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted.
So we're going to ask you, along with Andy, bring it back to us in form. It needs to be.
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
Treasurer, how, how much importance is the treasurer to this? Does she control, actually control over it, right?
What she does primarily with the policies with reserves, she doesn't really do the budget. So she does investments of the, of the cash. So I'm not, I mean, she would have a part in it, but I think it's your decision as to.
What she can do with investments, if she can do as well.
Right.
Very, very.
Proposing investment strategy.
No. So this is basically what the reserve, where we would maintain our reserves, our fund balance.
Just going on with that, that's good.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what we need? We need to, you, Andy, the minister?
All right.
Okay. We're going to move right on to pension, therefore. Okay, we're going to move right on to potential referendum items.
Mr. Mayor, Chair, members of council, we had talked a little bit about the general election 2024 is probably when our transportation sales tax will be, need to be renewed. And I just wanted to get direction from you. I'm assuming you want me to continue to proceed to put that together. We are two weeks, I think, meeting with the municipalities and going through the draft capital improvement plan that we put together. I say we, so Jennifer Bragg or Jay Bragg Consulting in Cloughton. You've allowed us to get into an agreement with her recently. She's done some pro bono work for us, has worked with Beaufort County in their road projects, and also Mr. Jared Fralich, the deputy county administrator over at Beaufort County. We've at least established an initial list of what we see as potential road projects that need to be done over the next 10 years, 20, 10 to 20 years, because of growth. And we will flesh those out with municipalities and try to get their concurrence on those. And then once we have that, that is the last piece of information that goes to the impact fee consultant, Mr. Carson Weiss, and then he will be able to finish the impact fee report for you. He has concluded with the portion for the school district. And so when he finishes yours, then he'll be able to start to present that to you and it actually goes through the planning commission. So I'm guessing another 30, 45 days before that all comes together. But the exercise really serves two purposes. It's to get the information for potential impact fees, but also it would be a nice way to establish what your potential projects might be for your transportation sales tax as well. Transportation sales tax program that you had previously that is still in play, haven't gotten a recent bank statement on it, but it was, again, a little performing. And so we will give you the latest and greatest, we'll get back and try to get it to the treasurer. And those projects have been already picked. Remember, you went through a process several months ago of redoing the ordinance to make it realign with the actual project that you approved, and adding an additional one, which was the work with Beaufort County on 170 near-term improvements. So all that is fine, you have earmarked $13.5 million of it for HSA 3. All that is a nice tidy package. It's time to think about the next phase. What's the next one? How long do you want to do it? How much could it potentially generate? Given our current numbers and our past performance, and what are the projects going to be? So I'll continue to work on that and bring that back to you. And then you can decide those items about how long and if you want to put it on the ballot. But I didn't know if there were any other projects or ideas that you wanted to have us doing some work on for your consideration to place on the ballot in 2024?
Part of the, part of the transportation tax.
Transportation sales tax, I think, I got general consensus from you all. You probably wanted to advance that to see if the voters want to do that. And so we'll continue to work on that. But I didn't know if there were any other items. Is the school district going to, does anybody know that they're going to do? They're going to go for another?
Unless something changes with their meals and what, if they can get the money that they need, they wouldn't do it. But as it stands now, that's the last thing she told me.
Okay.
They want to do it.
It's always helpful to communicate those things because, I mean, Mr. Teddy, you probably have experience with this, but often if you overwhelm a voter with lots of questions, you end up with nothing.
No more than two questions are in an election. That's about it.
Right, that's everything. Too much information can kill anything.
You want to be strategic about that.
Hopefully we won't go there, but on the road maintenance fee, to go back to what we talked about this morning, if they don't change it, there's a possibility of being able to have a road maintenance fee referendum being discussed.
Well, that's interesting.
That would be the way, if they don't grandfather in all the previous, then you'd have to have a new referendum to put it back in place.
Okay.
But we don't know about that now until the legislature finishes that issue.
So you're asking for projects?
Just ideas of, if you had any other ideas you wanted to float as referendum items. For instance, the Beaufort County, you may have seen in a recent election, pursued to change form of government, right? So do you want to...
Why don't, how about that levee with all that water? I mean, we had that study, where it was going to, about all the water that just stays there.
Well, it's, that's, actually, that's Ms. Clark's area, it is a very limited area, it's not, it's not...
It's not leaving.
It's a very, it's a, it's a small area, it's in the vicinity.
You're talking about Mr. Wright, Bannon?
I, I'm not familiar with the area, but I know that we did the study on that, and it was, and with all the development down there, it's not going to get any better, I don't think.
Right, the, are you suggesting like capital project sales tax? You have that opportunity as well. It's a little messier of a process. You establish a committee, pick projects for funding, and the committee comes back with recommendations and we put those items on the ballot.
I don't know.
I mean, just saying, we're going to have that new warehouse down there. We're putting in two, I think, three, there's three, three distribution centers down there that we were looking at. And I don't know, I'm not familiar with, I've never looked at where the study was versus where all this is going in.
Yes.
But anyway, it's going to be imperious, it's not going to be imperious, it's going to be...
Yeah, I think two of those three are south of that issue there. One of them is closer to exit 5.
But I think we should look at the relationship, just in case. And if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but at least it's...
Well, first of all, that, we did the study. We, the study concluded that the city's drainage that they currently had is not causing the problem. They determined that the water was not necessarily going straight down 17 as some of the residents saw, and that it was basically swirling around the side and coming in like a bubble. You remember that, Brian? And in order to prevent that, you would have to buy large tracts of land and you would have to erect levees. Okay? So you're talking about multi-million dollar projects. And given that, I never went back to the engineer, engaged them or tried to hire them to come up with estimates, but I think you're talking about substantial causes there. We just never went forward with that to try to get those costs. I can do that.
Or just another example, right, I think Beaufort just did it where they put a tax in there for open land.
Right, that's another thing. You may remember the report that the Open Land Trust did for you all. It had some suggestions in there about, did you want to try to throw out to the voter, did they, would they be willing to fund active conservation efforts? So I asked that you just think about all those things. And if you maybe want some more information on the potential of those types of items, we can try to collect a list for you. I'll tell you that capital project sales tax is one, I think you would work with that. You pick projects around the county and try to establish budgets for them, and then a committee recommends them and puts them all there. Are you willing to take that? Our problem is, of course, our sales tax is high because we've got the local option sales tax that will likely never come off.
Right.
And you've got a legislatively imposed 1% for the school district. And you have the transportation sales tax, so you're at 9%.
What is Beaufort at?
Do you know what they are now?
I can't remember what's fallen off, but what has...
Are they at 7? Did something, I think something else came back on.
I think they're going, they're flowing up to 1.
7 and going back to...
One went away.
The transportation tax went away, but I think something else came on, but I can't. And now they're going back to the county for transportation. It's 6 or 7%.
I mean, they're coming creeping up behind us. Great.
Sorry.
Well, if something comes to your mind, bring it, give it to Andy, and you all keep working.
And we'll try to establish it. I can work with David, maybe we can figure out like a timeline of absolutely when we must know something. That's probably pretty easy for us to do. But I'm going to keep, continue with the road work because I think everybody understands we're going to have to probably do that.
Okay. We're going to executive session right quick. I think these are very simple matters that we have in here.
John?
For item number one, discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, student, or person regulated by a public body, or the appointment of a person to a public body, salaries of elected officials, performance evaluations, county administrator, county attorney, clerk, and council. Number two, discussion of negotiations, incidents of proposed contract arrangements and proposed purchase or sale of property, the receipt of legal advice where the legal advice related to offending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the claim, the agency of the claim, Law Simak Associates Incorporated. Next is item number five, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraged, location or expansion of the industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. Project Madison, Project Crab.
Okay, do I hear a motion going to executive session?
Move, Mayor. Second.
The property move in second. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And, thirty, ten. So if there be nothing else, at this time, I'm going to call for motion to adjourn.
So, Mayor.
Right here, properly moving second. All the favors, say aye.
Aye.
Please be loaded.